Call to order, can I get roll call please?
Councilmember Mary Buchanan Jr. Councilmember Afike Aluna Carrasco.
Present.
Councilmember Jose Ponce.
Present.
Councilmember Matias Rosales.
Present.
Councilmember Gloria Torres.
Present.
Vice Mayor Maria Cecilia Cruz.
Present.
Mayor Generaltus Sanchez.
Present.
Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you, we're gonna go ahead and go with, uh, this is a special meeting and we're gonna go ahead and go with the item number two A. Continuation of discussion, review and possible directing the staff on all matters regarding the proposed city, uh, San Luis fiscal year 2021 budget. Uh, I, can I get a motion? Do we need a motion for point of clarification for this?
Yes.
No, it's a work session item.
It's a work session item, okay, I wanna make sure. Okay, so who's gonna be presenting first?
Monica is up first.
Perfect, Monica, bienvenidas, buenas tardes.
Uh, good evening, uh, mayor. Good evening, mayor, council members, uh, colleagues, uh, well, today, uh, we'll be, uh, reviewing on where we are right now with our budget. And before we go into detail of the capital project listing, I want, I want to give, uh, all of you a, um, a status of where the budget is right now. Uh, so, uh, right now you're looking at the, mm, numbers as were presented at the budget retreat. Uh, the first column that you see in the screen shows the deficits, uh, that are presented to all of you, uh, in the budget retreat. And as all of you are aware, at that time, we were struggling to balance, uh, the general fund. Uh, in the budget retreat, we had a, um, a million dollar deficit. So when we got back from that budget retreat, we started brainstorming on how we can reduce that, uh, deficit. And, uh, we started, uh, strategizing with city manager and Ralph. And in the capital projects, this is the item where pretty much we have not done nothing, and that's the item that we wanna, that we wanna be discussing tonight. Uh, but just for your awareness, for capital projects, when we came back from the budget retreat, we came back with a $49,000 more than what we had. And this is, uh, for the field station, for the fire station, that's a new project that was added. And it was, uh, a request from fire chief. The next item that we started to, uh, reduce was the operational expenses. We went back to all the departments and, uh, we requested them to, uh, reduce on their, uh, operational expenses. And from those, uh, reductions, we were able to get $82,000 and $72,000 in positions. In the positions, uh, chief of police, he opted to reduce a police officer, uh, instead of reducing of the operational expenditures. And, uh, he asked me if that is okay, I said, you know what, you are, uh, you are the head of your department, you know where you need more, the, the resources, so if you feel that that is where you feel comfortable, I don't have a problem with that, but, uh, I know that you counsel, you might see things differently, that's why I just wanna, uh, see, uh, show you a full picture of what, of what we are right now. The next item that we, uh, reduced was the salary adjustment. And that one, uh, in a conversation with city manager Ralph and myself, uh, we opted to face doubt the salary implementation, to, uh, be able to, uh, have some reductions and pretty much what is, is it doing is that we are proposing to face doubt, starting with the employees that are more far from the market. Those will be the ones that will be starting to, uh, get, uh, their adjustment first. And in November, we can start with the, uh, second wave of employees, those that are 95% and less. And for all the employees that are 95% and above, the adjustment will start in January. So by doing that face doubt, we get savings of $94,000. Uh, the next items are the allocations. This year, uh, we are proposing to expand our cost allocations to appropriately reflect the support that the central services provide to the other funds. Expanding the scope of this allocation will ensure each fund pays their fair share for the services that they receive. And also, I just wanna mention that this allocation is, i- it was not done internally. This is, uh, an allocation that it's, that it was prepared by, um, expert group, a consultant, consultants. Uh, this is pretty much what they do, and they have endured audits, uh, for government. Uh, this is a very sensitive area, that's why we chose to have an external firm to do that and not do it internally. So based on that, if we go ahead and do that implementation this year, we will be able to relieve the general fund of $550,000. So, um, taking in consideration of all of the items that I just mentioned, the general fund is just $251,000 short of being balanced. So that is good news, it, it doesn't seem like, um, that we are so far of the, uh, of our o- objective. However, uh, HERF enters into the picture, and this is where I really need council input of, uh, what are your priorities and where do you want us to move with? Uh, because if we go into the second line to see where we are with, with HERF, we can see that in the budget retreat, I presented that we had a $900,000 deficit. As I mentioned during the brainstorming after the budget retreat, we removed some of the capital projects. Uh, the one that we decided to remove was the, uh, streets related to the park. We were advised that the purchase of the land is not gonna take place until November, so we considered that the construction of those streets, we can push them a little far, uh, perhaps in the fiscal year 2022. Uh, also, on the operating expenditures for HERF, we got reductions of $15,000. And in the salary adjustment faced out, right there in the chart, it shows $70,000, but, uh, there was a typo, it's $30,000. And in the allocations, uh, that I was mentioning, we have savings of $108,000. But to those, we are adding $400,000 of restricted revenues that in the budget retreat numbers were offsetting the loss. So taking in consideration all the points that I just mentioned, uh, for HERF, we have a, uh, deficit right now of $672,000 that we need to reduce to, to be able to have a balanced budget. So here is where we have the three following options. Option one is, uh, proposing, uh, that subsidy for HERF. So the total reduction that we will did for HERF will be $670,000. And the total reduction for the general fund is $251,000. So I'm putting those numbers up there, so you have that in mind once we go into, uh, looking at the capital project listing, so you have an idea of what is, uh, the, that what we're trying to achieve. With the option two, we are, uh, is considering to subsidize HERF and to do all the projects that are in the capital listing for HERF. So the total reduction that we need in HERF is zero, because pretty much we are proposing that we wanna do all of them. But in order to do all of them, we need to, uh, we need the support, uh, from the general fund. So in total, we will need to reduce $923,000 in capital projects in the general fund. That will be option two. And option three is, uh, just to subsidize, uh, HERF partially, maybe just for some of, some projects that council might consider a priority. And, uh, the number that we will need to reduce is pretty much on whatever we go in excess of $517,000 in HERF. So, uh, those are the three options that I want you to have in mind once we go into the capital listing. And then also another area on which I'm gonna need direction from council is on the contingency budget, which was an item that, uh, I presented during the budget retreat. Uh, during the budget retreat, I proposed to have a contingency so that we can plan for our base case scenario, but in a responsible way. And, uh, uh, but, uh, after coming from the budget retreat, I received some feedback saying that perhaps it will be a better idea to have that in the general fund. So, uh, I wanna make sure that we put it in the best place, that's what I wanna, uh, put that into the table. And each side presents the pros and the cons of, uh, having it in one place or in another. So for, uh, the contingencies in the, in the council account, uh, we will need council approval before these, uh, funds are spent. Uh, it will safeguard the funds if the situation does not improve, but if the situation improves, uh, we will be able to spend them, and this is part of the presentation that I did on the budget retreat, uh, when I mentioned that even though that there is so many unknowns, we don't wanna shoot ourselves in the foot and not plan for the best case scenario. But, uh, we need to do it responsibly, in a way that we can really monitor how we are doing, and if things are improving or not as bad as, as we might think, we can start spending those funds down. Also is proposing to identify the capital items or salary items with less priority, and these will be moved into this bucket. Now, if we put that into the general fund account, uh, we will, we will not need council approval. And it will safeguard funds if the situation does not improve with more flexibility, since, uh, we will need the council approval, uh, each time that we need to spend those funds. Uh, for the other items, it will be, it be the same, we'll be identify them and we will put them in the separate account. And, uh, but it just will be internally, this will be done at administration level, not at a council level. So I also wanna leave that as a thought, so that, uh, council can provide direction in that matter.
Uh, Sonia, uh, now if you wanna go into the capital listing, do you have any questions so far, or before we move into the capital listing projects?
No.
Um, I have a question, Monica, okay, so you gave us three options, one's to subsidize, uh, HERF. Uh, option one, option two is basically subsidize it again, or basically reduce it from the, from the needed general fund, and basically, option number three, to subsidize also?
Yeah, the option one, uh, doesn't include subsidize HERF. It will be just right now, we're going to the, um, capital listing, and we will just need to reduce the, um, HERF capitals by $672,000. Right now we have $1,090,000, so we will need to cut it by $672,000. That is the option one, no subsidizing. And for the general fund, we will just need to cut $251,000 and we're done. Budget is balanced with option one.
You answered, you answered the question perfect, okay, thank you. And this contingency fund that you're talking about, where will we get the money to, to, to lead the contingency?
Uh, the budget for the contingency, pretty much it will be what, what we, we have in the budget, and based on priority, for instance, you might say, well, this vehicle is not really urgent, and right now we don't know how things are gonna turn out. We're gonna select projects that are in the capital items and say, okay, I think this can go into the contingency, and we're gonna prioritize and say, you know what, this cannot wait, this really need to happen now. So we have about 11 million right now in capital projects, and we are proposing to moving to the contingency fund only $800,000.
Okay, okay, you've answered my question, thank you. Any else, any other person have a question before we move on? Councilmember Ponce, no questions?
Uh, not yet, not yet, go ahead.
Okay, Vice Mayor, any questions?
Uh, not yet, mayor.
Okay, very good. Uh, Councilmember Afike Aluna Carrasco, questions?
No, mayor, I'm good.
Okay, Councilmember Matias Rosales, questions, concerns?
Uh, yeah.
Thank you, uh, Councilmember Mary Buchanan, questions or concerns?
No, mayor, not at this moment.
Okay, Council, Councilwoman Gloria Torres, any questions or concerns?
Uh, no, but I, I, I don't know, not too much, much, uh, numbers, but I think Monica would manage the manis, the monies wisely. And then I, we think, uh, we do, we, we should do what Monica can recommend it, because she is the one that handles the money. And I know there's some, um, hmm, some, uh, capital project that, uh, don't need it right now, but we can talk about it later.
Yes, yes, we will, thank you, yes, we will, thank you. Uh, Monica, proceed.
Okay, so, uh, now we're gonna move into the capital project listing. And, uh, right now, the column after is pretty much where we are right now. Uh, so, column E, where we have the department request column, that shows the initial request from all the departments, pretty much, uh, the Christmas wish list that everybody, uh, wants to happen, all of them are, uh, good projects. Uh, and, and that is where it gets very difficult to really identify what to do and not to do with the limited resources that we have. Now, in column G, where it says propose continuation capital projects, that is a little bit of a first round of, uh, reductions, uh, that it was done in collaboration with administration and Ralph. And pretty much, uh, uh, it was reduced a little bit, but not, not enough to get to the result that we want. And that column I, where it says after, this is how our capital project bu- budget looks right now. So right now, I want you, uh, to concentrate on column I, where it says after, because that is what we have right now in the budget. And as I was mentioning, depending on the option that you wanna do, is pretty much what we will need, uh, to work together to get an, uh, balanced budget for, uh, next fiscal year. If we go with the option of no subsidizing for HERF, pretty much the task is almost done. We just need to, to reduce $250,000 from, uh, the general fund projects. But, uh, if you want to pursue, uh, several projects in HERF that are, that are in, uh, uh, more than what, what the HERF, uh, fund can sustain, we wanna need to reduce a little bit more in the general fund. So I don't know if you wanna start by looking first on HERF, so you can decide if all the projects that are there are, uh, priority or if there are projects there that, uh, council will consider to, uh, delay, uh, given the circumstances right now. Because I think that the HERF fund is the key to knowing what to do with a general fund.
Can we see the, the HERF listing on the screen, please?
The HERF.
Can you go a little bit down, Sonia, please?
There.
Magic number is two, what is it, Monica, two, okay?
Excuse me?
What's the magic number again, two?
For HERF, the magic number is $670,000. Right now we have $1,190,000 there. So if we remove $670,000 from that listing, we will only need to reduce $250,000 from the general fund. That is a positive balance, 2.5 million, that's a positive balance. Oh, for the... Your capital project listing, Tadeo? Okay, because you're looking at the, uh, total highway user fund, the 2 million? Yeah, Tadeo, maybe he's looking at the total HERF fund budget, including the impact fees projects, but those are not, um, I'm not putting those into question, because pretty much, uh, we have already dedicated funds for that. Uh, they're not, uh, we have positive balance in those funds, in the impact fees funds, to carry out those projects. So right now, the one that we're trying to balance is the one at the top, the 100...
The 1 million and 190, 190,000 dollars.
When you say top... Monica, when you say 1 million, you point, point at it, okay?
What line number are you talking about?
When I say 1,190,000, if you look at the HERF fund summary...
On the third, on the third column.
Monica, line item, line item 159.
Okay, thank you, Ralph.
Yeah, that's what we need, 159, so that's 1.19...
Oh, yeah, here.
Right there, okay, yeah, that's what we wanna see. You can mention all the numbers you want, but we always see is a lot of numbers, so...
Yeah, this is the one.
Lee, uh, try to be specific, please, thank you.
So right here we have, uh, 1.119. And from here, we need to get out $670,000. If we can do that, pretty much the general fund will be only $250,000, uh, uh, short of being balanced.
Now, on the, on the, on line 151, the 10th Avenue traffic signal, is that amount our portion or with, uh, wasn't that a three-way or a four-way split or something? Is that the correct amount?
Three-way split.
Three-way split, but is that more, that's a three-way split amount, or is that the whole fund itself?
That's our portion.
You're talking about the 10th Avenue and Cesar Chavez Boulevard?
The half a million, it's, uh, what the city would have to pay.
Uh, yeah, and it has the two, but we already taking in consideration the, uh, developer portion two, so that's already part of the equa- equation. I, I think that is a very good question, Matias, because if we get to reduce this item from here, the 500,000, this is worth only $250,000. Because on the revenue, we have the $250,000 from the developer.
So Monica, so Monica, yeah, you just mentioned you have $500,000, but it actually means 250?
Yeah, because this project is, the total cost is $500,000. We need to budget for the whole project. But this project, the developer, is gonna contribute $250,000, $250,000. So, if we remove this project, the $250,000 that we have in the revenue is gonna have to go out.
Monica, let, let me interject, Monica. The five, the half a million is buys us two corners. Comité needs to press 250, and right now, 250 for a total of 1 million.
Ah, okay, okay.
That is the cost, the half a, that buys, that buys two corners.
Okay, thank you for the, for clarifying, because how can you have a $500,000 there, but actually it means 250? So we need to have actual numbers there, so, but by you saying two corners, uh, it makes sense.
Yes, I get it now, thank you, Ralph.
But, oh, don't put anything that's, that's not there, actually, so, if it's 500, we have to...
I think what Monica was trying to say was that if we put the 500,000 and we don't get the developers to contribute, we're not gonna be doing that project, so that 500,000 will be left over. Is that what you're trying to say, Monica?
What I'm understanding, what I'm understanding is what Ralph just told me, it's two corners.
No, 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 yeah, 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 yeah.
I understand what she's trying to say, I understand what she's trying to say, but I just wanna make sure we, we were very clear about those 500,000. So we, we understand.
But do we have commitment from the other two parties in regard to their two corners already? Or not, or how, how does that process work again?
Uh, good evening, mayor, vice mayor, um, members of council. So, so I just wanna clarify, so, so what we have in the budget is the $500,000 for the signal at that intersection. Um, so, so the 500,000, that's what it would cost to put in the signal. And that's, uh, that's an estimate, we, we haven't finalized the design, but it would be 250 from the city and then 125 from each developer. Um, when we do the full intersection, what we're looking at is doing the winding, but I think the contribution was to put in the signal, so we wouldn't be able to, um, go after the developer for the remainder of the funds, I don't think. So that's why we have 500,000 in the budget for the signal installation.
Okay, that makes more sense, thank you.
So my understanding is, is incorrect, Iluvio?
Uh, no, no, actually, the way you mentioned it, it was 250 each developer. Uh, actually, it's 250 for two developers and then the city, uh, is doing a half. So a quarter each, and then the city's doing a half. So it'll be 125 each, and then, uh, the 250 for the city.
Got it, thank you.
So, uh, just to conclude, uh, I think that I heard, uh, Matias comment, and I think that your comment is, I think the way that you were understanding it, Matias, is correct. Right now we have $500,000 in the budget, in the expenditure portion of site, but the revenue that is coming from the developer, we have in, on the revenue side.
Mayor?
Yes, I'll say.
Okay, I, I, I mean, I kinda still have a question. Uh, I noticed that, uh, uh, there're proposing two traffic signals, one on, on 22nd, uh, and then one on Cesar Chavez Boulevard, okay? Uh, I can notice it, I mean, that big, uh, price difference, I mean, uh, I don't know too much about, I don't not know actually about the traffic signals. Oh, quite, I mean, it's a big difference, um, one, another one. One is, uh, 150,000, the other was, uh, 500,000 dollars.
Um, you're needing this, Iluvio, where again? Um, so the big difference mainly in this case on counties 22nd and 4th Avenue, first, it's, it's one leg less, so it's only a three-way intersection. So that means one mast arm, one less pole, one less light, um, less conduit to install. So that's the main difference, and then the other thing is the, uh, Cesar Chavez Boulevard and, uh, 10th Avenue, it has the, uh, the four lanes, or actually five lanes on Cesar Chavez, and only, actually, uh, no, it's, it still, it also has the three legs on, on, on 10th. So, so it is a longer or bigger intersection, so requires bigger mast arms, bigger poles, a lot more conduit also. So that's, that's why the difference, uh, in, in both of them are just estimates, uh, we don't have the final design. Although with any eye on the, um, 4th Avenue and County 22nd, um, 4th Avenue and County 22nd, we're closer on finalizing the design. But that, that's, that's the reason, the big difference. And, and the other thing is, when then 4th Avenue and, and County 22nd, two or three years ago, council approved, uh, the winding and adding some turn lanes there. So all that work, it's already completed, uh, not needed, is really just, just the intersection, the signal. And that's where the savings are at this point, a lot of the work was already completed.
Good, thank you, Iluvio, thank you.
Iluvio, since you're after, uh, mayor, can I ask a question?
Yes, please.
On the paving preservation project FY21, the 350, is that anything that we, I mean, I know we're, we were able to do more streets with this last approval that we did, the preservation, I understand that's to preserve the current streets, is there anything that... is there anything that we're able to save on that for this fiscal year? If we wanted to reduce that by 50,000 or 60 or something? What's your opinion on that?
I think, my recommendation would be, if we wanted to save some money on the pavement preservation, I will still leave it in, in that area of maintenance, and I will try to repave the streets that are not being completed with the Los Portales project. I mean, so this Wednesday, we have the change order, which we were able to add three more streets. We now only have two small portions of two streets, and then one very short street, and that will take care of the worst streets in San Luis. So if I was to take out of pavement preservation, I would try to use it for the, for the repaving of that. But at the end of the day, you know, what it comes down to, if we don't have enough money, we can definitely cut it, cut it, cut it short and use it somewhere else, for sure. Thank you.
Thank you, Illoquio.
Can we, I have a question for you, since you were only focusing on HERF, what you have in curve, can we deduct or remove other capital improvement projects from other parts to compensate for the difference?
Can you repeat again your question, Mayor?
Can we, because you're focusing only on HERF, can we retract from other expenses that are not part of HERF's to compensate for HERF's?
Yes, and that, that's pretty much the option too, what we are proposing, if you say, you know what, this project in HERF, these, that, all of these are important. Right now, we need to reduce 250,000 from general fund, but general fund can subsidize. And this year, in fact, general fund subsidize HERF to be able to complete projects this year. Because right now, one of the issues that we are facing with HERF, and this is something that Illoquio and I have talked about, is that the revenue that we get for this fund is very limited. Pretty much, all of the revenue goes into just the operation, and leaves very little revenue to do projects. And pretty much, this is a, something that most municipalities do, subsidize HERF to be able to provide greater benefit to that community. And this year, we contributed, I believe, 300,000? 300,000 dollars, that's what the general fund subsidized to be able to complete some of the projects that were in the budget for this year. So if we will do that, we will just continue while we try to figure out a way on how to, creative ways on how to maximize efficiencies and to be able to do more projects than what we currently can. But right now, if we wanna leave all the projects there, we just need now, leave HERF for now, and we can go to the general fund. But it gets more difficult, because right now, it will be 6, 7, 900,000 dollars. That's what I was hoping, that maybe we can meet maybe a mid-ground and say, okay, maybe just remove this and that, and maybe we just can give 300,000 to HERF, so we don't have to take that much from the general fund. But this is where, isn't it up to me, is a decision of council, of what is a priority? And we just try to find our ways on how to make happen, what is the, to do the projects that the community needs.
Right, so that's why Monica, that's why my original question was earlier. So to do the way you're recommending, our magic number was like 291,000 or something, right, from the HERF?
No, from the general fund. On the HERF, we need 672. So going back to that 1.2 million and the list before you, that's, that's where the question, it's been posed to you. I mean, are there, are there any of those projects that you think we should not, or that we, not, not, we should do all of them, but that you think it could wait one more year?
I get, I get that, but I'm, I'm sorry, I must be having a dumb moment today, but I'm getting confused again on the number. Monica, what is your suggestion? You said around 300,000, that's what you threw me off again. What is it, the number that we need to cut out of these projects?
That's straightforward number, and, and I'm just gonna forget about the developers. I can go back and find those 250,000, the developers. Let's just try to reduce there in 670,000. That will be the more straightforward. Regardless of if I have to do that 250 or not, I can figure it out, or... There always happen that there are projects that are not done, or things like that, we can count on that. 250,000 are not gonna like break the bank, per se, just to simplify the task that you have.
Okay, I have a question for you, Mr. Illoquio Vera, I have a question for Illoquio. Illoquio?
Yes, Mayor?
On the traffic signal light on 10th Avenue and Cesar Chavez Boulevard, are we ready for that? Are the developers ready for that? Or are we gonna have another 10 years to have the money ready from the developers for that?
From the, on the developer side, we, I'm not, right now, I think would be a good time for the city to try and get that money, because they, they're selling a lot, you know, they're, they're doing well. I'm not sure how much they'll fight it, so I would say it's a good timing. What I can say, though, on the construction of that, what we could encounter as a delay would be the right-of-way acquisition or permission from Bureau of Reclamation.
So is that gonna cost us an arm and a leg?
Hopefully not, I, I don't think that's gonna be a cost issue, it's gonna be more of the delay on the permitting. On, we do have right-of-way, but regardless of that, we still have to go through their permitting process. It shouldn't be as long, or not even close to as long as state land, but that's really the, the thing that's still outstanding from, from the 10th Avenue and Cesar Chavez Boulevard. But I mean, I think it's, I think the question might be more for our legal department, see, just going after the developers through the development agreement that exists to try and get those funds in place for the city to use.
They have a contractual obligation, which is still viable.
Unfortunately, I've heard that before, and actually, they, they actually are able to modify or whatever they owe. So I just want to make sure we, okay, if we're gonna dedicate 500,000 for that, this particular intersection, I just want to make sure that we can actually get the money. Because right there then, if, if you tell me right now, we're not sure if we're gonna get the money or not, we can actually save 500,000 and extend it one more year. That is, that intersection, that, that's needed, and I understand the need, but I just want to make sure that we're not stuck with this 500,000 dollars, we decide not to do another essential. Basically, what, what you, what you put there are essentials, basically, something that we need to do. My next question to you is, how often has the city subsidized HERF?
This is first, and maybe Illoquio can, can tell you, because I've only been here two years. Illoquio has been more years than I have been, but I'll let Illoquio answer that.
Mayor, this year is the first year that I recall, and even with my conversation with the previous public works director, I don't think HERF had been subsidized by HERF, by general fund, general fund before. So it is like Monica mentioned, you know, it is something that all cities, I think, that I've talked to, do. We were sort of the only ones that really didn't get any fun, any direct additional funding to HERF before. So this is the first year. And I also want to clarify, or just reiterate something that I mentioned in the retreat. My list of projects that I put together, you know, I, I do not expect, or I didn't expect all of them to get funded. I mean, we, we know that HERF funding is, you know, is limited, so, that's, you know, that's what I've done before, and I'm doing it, I mean, we did it again this year, have the list of projects, and, you know, we can cut the ones that we think are less important. So, so just, I just want to make it clear that I didn't, I wasn't expecting, you know, all projects to be funded, so...
Okay, my next question is, for example, what's the origin of the HERF funds? Where do we get the, this is for clarification, for those people that don't realize where the HERF fund comes from, and how it's been impacted over the years, especially the past two years.
Okay, so actually, HERF funding is actually fairly complicated, how it's compiled by the state, but it is from vehicle license tax, from registration payments, from gas taxation as well. And it all goes to the state, and then it gets distributed through actually some fairly complicated formulas. And then with that, you know, it's, it's taken over to the cities, to the counties, to the, to the state, and it's very restricted, it's supposed to be only for roadway use. Unfortunately, over the last, I think it's now close to a decade, you know, there, there have been sweeps, and the funding has been directed, diverted over to public safety for highway patrol. And unfortunately, I mean, those are services that the community also needs, but it, it had a big or huge impact on the HERF funding that goes to the actual streets. In the last couple of years, there has been progress on those sweeps, and those sweeps have been reduced, and that's why our revenues have been increased slightly. But that, 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 those sweeps to public safety had, had, had a huge impact on HERF, and that's why many municipalities and counties have been hurting for, to be able to maintain the roadways. I mean, if you go to City of Yuma, you, I mean, pretty much everywhere you go, except, I mean, those cities that have substantial general fund revenues, they can always subsidize left and right, you know, to HERF. But overall, that's, that's one of the issues that we have with HERF, it's limited, and we, we were hurting for many, many years, and that's why many of the roadways, you know, were, were needing attention. So I'm very happy with the city of San Luis is doing as an employee and as a resident. If you leave your streets without maintenance, you know, over a decade, you'll be replacing paving 100%, and that's, that gets really, really expensive.
Thank you, Illoquio, and I want everyone to understand that HERF funding is very complicated, and over the years, it's been actually reduced, reduced, and by the time the city gets it, it's a pretty low number, so... Let me tell you, since, this is not gonna change. Our HERF funding is not gonna improve next year, it's probably gonna be less next year. So that's a fact, and the thing is, I don't see the governor or putting in a couple of million more in the HERF fund. And unfortunately, our legislature in the state, HERF is a fair, fair game, and, and I understand that. But it's not because we're misusing the money, let me be very clear, and that's why I wanted you to speak regarding where the HERF money comes. So thank you, Illoquio, and eventually, we're gonna have to subsidize HERF unless we wanna stop fixing our roads. So I have no problem subsidizing HERF at this point in time, because this is gonna be a normal thing, it's gonna occur over time. I don't foresee HERF money increasing lately, maybe not, not for the next two or three years. So we need to invest in our streets. The projects that are mentioned are important projects. I mean, the dump trailer, I mean, that's what, 55,000? Actually, 15,000, little things like that, I mean, they impact, but overall, there's not a lot of projects for the HERF fund to be, to actually do it. Traffic lights, I think traffic lights are important, especially in that area. So I don't know, but I have no problem cutting other projects to subsidize HERF this time. We subsidize it 300,000. I suggest, we, we actually look for 300,000, we can cut in the, in, in the other areas, and only maybe cut 300,000 from the HERF right now. When, when, when you ask us to do 600 and cut the budget by 600-something thousand, that's a big chunk of the HERF, so...
Yeah, and we don't need to do that, the 600,000, and that, that was the option three. We can just do maybe 300,000 and, or 200,000, and ask general fund for support. So this is where, what it gets like creative, like we can, it doesn't have to be less than 600,000 if... But this is up to council, like what projects do you wanna leave there, and which one should we remove and delay? And by removing, doesn't mean that we're not gonna be doing them, it's just that they will be delayed, maybe for next year. Again, right now, Mayor, you mentioned something that is very true. HERF funds are not increasing. In fact, the information that we received from the City of Leaks, when we got the estimates of what will be, what we'll be getting this year, pretty much they said, you know, with this, the situation, it's possible that, most likely, they're not gonna be increased, and possibly, maybe a small reduction, like, we don't know yet. So that's why we're trying to be conservative, we're using right now that same numbers as this year as revenue, because we don't know exactly what we're gonna be getting.
Yeah. So I don't know what you think, but I think we should, we should actually cut 300,000 and find another 300,000 from the rest of the budget. I, I still, I think we should subsidize 300,000 for HERF. Streets are very important, and the thing is, those projects that are being mentioned, listed, there are not a lot of them. If we had 20 projects, it'd be easier to cut, but at this point in time, we're talking, they're, they're all important.
And I'm not sure, Illoquio, on the 500,000 dollars, is there any way, per se, that that one can be put at 200,000, that you just can get started, but you're not gonna complete it all, just maybe just to get it started, and...
Yeah. Can we, can we, can we actually split it?
Phase it out.
Yeah, and that was something that Monica and I discussed during, I think, our process, I mean, throughout the last couple of months. It is an option, you know, any of these projects, I mean, if, if we, the only thing is, we just have to, we sort of commit to this year and next year. But we can definitely say, you know, 10th Avenue and Cesar Chavez, we'll get it started in the, in the second half of the fiscal year, try to get it procured in that half of the fiscal year, and then make sure, depending on how bids come in, we can sort of schedule the construction based on what we think is gonna be built this fiscal year. But with that, you know, we would, we would be committing, completing the project the following fiscal year. We've done that before, we did that for Cesar Chavez and 1st Avenue intersection, and it turned out okay, you know, it just, unfortunately, just because of the limitations of HERF funding, I mean, small cities like us, I mean, that's, that's one thing that we almost have to do, because trying to fit in bigger projects is almost impossible.
I mean, just look at the 40 by 75 building storage, the shop office storage space. We, we split that up, I mean, we're spinning, that's, that's an essential, and we've committed to that one. Why can't we commit to the, to the, what shall we call it, the traffic signal light divided in half? And, and actually, that gives us some time to collect that money from the developers, because we're not gonna collect it in two months, three months.
That makes sense, I mean, if we do that line item at the 250, get it started, and by the end of the next year, the fiscal year, the developer, we've got the right-of-way, the developers, you know, we'll do the second phase at the beginning of the, end of the next fiscal year. And I think, there, if we wanted to remove, it'd be easier to get another 50,000 in there, you know, even coupled 100,000 out of the budget, so that makes sense.
I agree. It would be making it much easier, and, and I think, I'm sure we can find the other 200,000 or 250 from the rest of the budget.
Yeah.
I mean, I mean, I know the IT van that they're requesting is 55,000, so... No, just kidding, they're not requesting a van. Pero sí. So what does council think?
Mayor, may I make a comment, please?
Yes, please.
I agree with phasing it out, because we have been talking about Avenue 10th and Cesar Chavez for years. And I think it's time to start committing to these big projects, and not waiting for, well, is the developer ready? We just gotta bill them for what they were committed to, what they said they were committed to by the contractual agreement, and just do it. You know, phasing it out and then committing them to what they said they were gonna agree to do. That's enough, it's too many years wasted.
I agree, that gives us some time to actually, actually collect the money. Because we're not gonna collect it in six months or eight months, but if we split it, that gives us enough time for the developers to actually give up their share, and we have to. And so, I agree. So I'm gonna open it up to the floor, do you have any questions? Claudia, do you have any questions or concerns?
No, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Jose Ponce, questions or concerns?
Well...
Well, yes, just a comment. On those traffic lights, can we get away with them and just with one one? I mean, do we need both of them this year? Or, you know, can we postpone one of them for maybe next budget, next year, something?
What happened, Mr. Ponce, is like that area is growing so fast, so quick that the traffic that goes through F section, it's just, it's too much. So we need control. Either we have a police officer there basically in the mornings and the afternoons. Or we have a signal. And the thing is, they need another way to get out. And we need to control traffic. Or else we're going to start seeing a lot more traffic go into mixing with trucks. So these are only two. And the biggest problem is, we have developers who basically, we have an agreement that they're going to pay a certain percentage. Just look at Plaza Riedel, that intersection on 10th. That light, we have commitment, but it's been how many years? And so the odds are, it's going to be really hard to get that money. So now the developer are building. So it's, and I agree with Mr. Veda, this is the time. But we could do that in phases, phase one and phase two, but we need to commit. Yeah, okay.
Mayor, before, can I ask a question?
Please.
This is the 10th signal. What about the other two? Do we have the same proposed? I mean, the other two signals, the fourth and the one, and it's on 22nd Street?
Locchio, do we have a commitment from the developers or is that something we have to do ourselves?
No, so the way, and you could correct me if I'm wrong, but the agreement for Cesar Chavez and 10th Avenue, that was pretty much proposed and accepted, executed when Las Quintas went in from the Riedel side and also when Bienestar 7 went in from Comité side. And that's why that development agreement was put in place for that intersection. For County 20-
Mayor, may I ask a question, please?
Wait, let Locchio finish and then we'll continue your question, Vice Mayor, please. Locchio?
Thank you. And then for County 22nd and Fourth Avenue, really, all three intersections or parcels at the intersection, they're really vacant. So they really haven't been developed, so we really can't, or we haven't tied those contributions to any specific development. We possibly could have done it to, like, for example, the apartments complex there, but we didn't. We just don't have that in place for the intersection. And then for Fourth Avenue and Cesar Chavez, we don't have that either. And we're also working on the design for 6th and Cesar Chavez as well. And with that, we do have some agreement with Gadsden Elementary School District. It's not a big contribution compared to this other intersection, but they are contributing some. So, you know, this is something that we have been entering into and looking at it more closely lately. Just because at the same time, there's more traffic. And most of the time, the impacts to intersections, they're pretty much quantified by the trips generated by each development. So for example, just to recap, you know, when we did, we recently did another agreement with the developers out in East San Luis on Avenue E and County 24th Street. You know, this is sort of trying to get developers to pay their share directly at the intersection where they're impacting. So not all of them have it. If we can, the city should try and pursue that for future signals and future developments. And that's just my opinion.
No, it's a very valued opinion. Thank you, Mr. Veda. Vice Mayor, you got a question?
I'm sorry for the interruption, Mayor. I just wanted to know when that contractual agreement was made.
The one on 10th Avenue?
Yes.
Just a guess.
Twenty years ago?
Probably less, maybe a little bit less.
Okay, it was 19.
I don't know why, but 2007 sticks in my mind. I'm not sure if that's right or not.
It'll probably be very close.
I don't remember that one. It's beyond, it's older than that.
That agreement was done when the Plaza was built and I've been here 15 years and that was already there.
I thought it was when it was being built.
Yeah, I just believe this is time already. This does enough. You know, waiting, waiting, it's just ridiculous already.
Yeah.
Mayor, Mayor?
Yes, Mario, go ahead.
Okay, well, we all know here that because of the census, we're not going to get more police officers. So they're not going to be taking care of our intersections. And we all know also that since the developers agreed to do that light on 10th and Cesar Chavez, we should take advantage, we should do it. Because, I mean, Chief Jessup, he knows that he doesn't have the crew to take care of our intersections, right? So I think that's a need for the community. We all know that. I know we're fighting for that money to do it, but I think that's one of the priorities that we should take care of. And the other intersections, yeah, if we need a light, I mean, I mean, it's easy for me to say, let's do it, let's do it. But I think we should start for the needs of the community. And I think 10th and Cesar Chavez is one of the ones that we've been waiting for the longest.
Yeah.
So we should get all in, on board and let's think about about that one there that is a must for the community. And, I mean, and you think Cesar Chavez and Fourth is needed also? Well, I mean, that at least will help to control the traffic, you know, for the officers. I mean, it's just my thoughts on that.
No, thank you. Thank you, Councilman McCann. And that's true. Because based on 8.2% participation on the census, we're not going to have enough actually population to justify having more police officers, having the number of police officers that we have right now, unfortunately. And sure enough, yes, it's important. That intersection on 10th, it is something that needs control because we're not going to be able to afford to have a police officer at an intersection in the mornings and in the evenings. You're absolutely right. And so I believe Ralph, you had an opinion? Can I listen from Ralph, please?
Okay, Mayor, on line item 151, the half a million. Okay, and knowing that Monica and Locchio worked very hard on this items, that is not our true cost. Our true cost is 250, not half a million. And this is what I thought each corner was going to be 250, but it's 125 according to Locchio. So that half a million that's being budgeted really should be 250 somewhere and not half a million.
We really need this to be clarified. We're just going around in circles. Please, somebody clarify this.
Yes, I remember that one. I remember that one. They were going to split 125, 125, and then 250.
Right, which is what I thought. It went up to 250 each corner. Corners at half a million, but it's not. It's 125, so makes our cost 250.
So we're budgeting the half a million because we have to expense that out and it has to be shown on the budget. However, we only need to spend $250,000.
Because on the revenue side, we're going to show revenue 250 because the developers are going to pay us 125, 135.
That is correct.
One, they have to show debit and credit. That's what I understood as well.
That is correct.
I mean, at the end of the day, I mean, discussing, we're going back and forth and like the mayor suggested, I don't see no issue in going through that option and figuring this out with our funds. I mean, we've never done it and I think we're solid in our reserves, so.
Exactly.
Project's done, we need it for the community and we got to be able to move forward.
Thank you, Matias. Thank you. Go ahead.
Exactly, that, when Councilmember Matias mentioned that, yeah, we have been going around the 250 in revenue or not, and I knew that I was causing confusion. That's what I said, you know what? Let's forget about the 250. I'll take the 500,000 as a whole and I'll worry about the 250. Because if we remove that item, the 500,000, it will be like if we only are removing 250,000 because that is the true cost. But I know that is a very difficult situation that all of us are in. And just to, I know that sometimes projects will not get realized. This year, we had savings in HERF because of salaries. So we can make that bet and take that risk. We have very healthy reserves for anything, even though that I don't like to use them. If we have come to that, those 250, I'll just figure out where to get them. So if we remove that item, 500,000, we will just need 170,000 more and that's it. But I don't know, I get the feeling that that project is very important. And that's what still, I don't, I'm trying to see what it's that council wants to do.
Okay, I have a question, another question. Okay, let's say, for example, we go 250 on that project. Actually, the actual number that we need. Okay, now tell me about the CSL roadway improvement. Could you remove that line, please? That I'm reading from the screen, please. Whoever is touching the dump trailer, please remove the icon, please. I need to read it. Thank you.
They're going to move it.
Thank you. The roadway improvement in support of the 20 acres San Luis Community Park. Okay, this is the roadway we're talking about that we were going to hold off on this one?
Correct.
Okay, so can we, can we cut half of that? Since we're going to delay it, another, can we split that into phases?
Well, right now, because we removed the whole project, Mayor, pretty much that doesn't have an effect. Because right now, the list that we are looking at and the one that represents what we have right now in the budget is the column I. The roadway improvement for the park was included in the department request. And we took it to the budget retreat. And when we came back in a conversation with city manager and Ralph, it was mentioned to me that this project was not going to be done until November. So we remove it. So that's already, that project is not being taken in consideration. If you look at it, we were 1.6 million and now we're 1.1 million. So that project is already, but we can put it in, but it will make the situation a little bit worse.
No, we're not going to put it in. No, I just want to make sure. I just want a clarification on that, on that half a million dollars, that 510.
Mayor, if you want to take something off, you can take off line number four and let's move forward.
Line four, which one?
Which one?
First line, up, 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 up. You're on 150 right now. Scroll it up.
Okay, to which one?
Number four.
Yeah.
Yeah, take that one off right away.
Yes, we don't, we never use it.
We use it, we just don't need it.
But I think I'm comfortable driving it for another year or two and so is Miss Ramos, I'm assuming.
Yes, yes, we don't need a new one. That one's a useful one. Take it off.
We can hold off on that one, yes. Take it off.
And also, also the city expansion.
What's about the expansion part? Is that for the?
City Hall expansion? What's 230?
That one is for the Polyworks Planning and Zoning and IT Department. The IT Department is a bit of exposed since it cannot be enclosed. There are no leftover cubicles on that side.
We can wait another year on that one.
Oh, let's move forward.
We can move, we actually, we can hold it off another year for that one.
How about line 52? How important is that right now? Do we need to use those funds for that specifically?
Replace?
I agree. We can wait another year for that one. We can wait another year for that one.
And then line 68?
Oh, no, we have to. No, that's a must.
Okay, making sure because the suburban with this COVID-19 right now, that's a little bit.
You should see, you should see, you see the condition. It's cracked and it's leaking water.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Actually, it might mess, it actually makes sense that we're not going to be using it much because of the COVID to do it this year.
It's the best time to do it. Now, the pool needs to be, actually, we need a new pool. Because the one that we have is broken and it's leaking water. And so this will give us probably another year or two. So we need to invest in plaster. We really do.
Okay.
Or we can get $10 million from somewhere and have a new one.
I think if we do those little minor items and they move forward with the idea that, you know, we've never subsidized and continue what we originally talked about earlier, let them find it and I think we'll be okay. We have good, what do we have? We have good reserves, don't we? We've never touched them. Yeah, we've never touched them. I mean, we've been smart about it for the past eight years, so. I think this way we'll do this year and everything and get a lot of projects done.
Okay, can we get another tally so we can see where we're at?
Taking out which one?
The ones you mentioned.
Suburban.
And 84, so that's 134?
No expansion, no expansion.
Then we're way over then. We're good.
134?
The expansion, I mean, with the expansion, if we go over, maybe just do that, set that up as a phase two. Start the first part and then start it in the year and then the beginning of next year. Because they got a designer, they got to do the project, so I don't know if we're able to split that up also in phase.
Locchio, can we phase that out?
Yes, we can.
Yes, we will.
Yes, we can.
Yeah, I would suggest delaying or the county, which one was it? Okay.
The expansion.
Up on top.
The expansion or the city hall?
The city hall expansion.
I'm sorry, I got distracted, so.
I did number eight.
Okay, yeah, that one I really haven't been involved, but I think I'll leave it up to the city administrator to see what he thinks. But I would propose phasing the 10th Avenue and Cesar Chavez intersection starting this fiscal year, but not needing the entire amount and finishing the next fiscal year. Like I said, there's going to be a delay in permitting so that, you know, even if we wanted to, we wouldn't be able to get started right away. We're fairly far along on the design, but it's really the right of way that would be holding us. So I would say delaying that would also help the overall situation and it also would be realistic.
So, Mr. Veda, you're actually agreeing with splitting the 10th Avenue signal?
Yes, yeah, I would say, you know, committing this fiscal year to building it, whatever it costs. And then not having the entire budget this fiscal year because we wouldn't be able to spend it all anyway, so just delaying it. And I got recently, like, I got an update from the designers, so we do have to go after some right of way. So I would say, you know, I don't know, 200,000. And maybe finance can help us how we would go after the funding from developers, whether we put it ourselves and then go after their contribution towards the end. But at least there'll be some reductions there or we can do the request for their funding proportional to however we put in this fiscal year. That could be also an option.
Yeah. No, no, I agree with that. So, and also about the city hall expansion, we can actually, can we split that also?
Derek.
I know Derek wants to say something.
Mayor, can I say something?
Yes, please.
I think we should concentrate it in projects that benefit the community. Not projects that we benefit ours. I mean, we should concentrate and benefit the community, like their lives, like their roads, things that benefit the community, not ours.
Okay, thank you. So, yeah, thank you. Derek, tell us about what you're going to talk about, what's your opinion here?
I just wanted to add on the expansion project. I don't know about any, or if there's other departments that are going to be getting any new positions. But I know we do have a position that we are proposing for our next fiscal year. It's the network administrator. And as how we are right now, we're very limited in the space. So especially, again, I just want to- So, especially, again, I just wanna, the whole situation that we're going right now, and then we do wanna keep at least, you know, spacing apart. And how we are right now, I know I have two, two of my IT technicians, they're pretty much back to back. And that whole wing, we're always, you know, it's a, we're fighting over space, and I know everybody. Jose and also El Ojo, we're very limited on space.
I think, Mayor, I mean, I don't know, was the last time you got them back, but not only that, that department is not secure for being IT, and the data, and everything that we rely on them producing. So I think with the movements that we did with the suburban, the soccer field lights, and then splitting up that other project, I think anything that we're short, should move forward like we planned. We already found 100,000 with those other two little projects. That's what Monica was asking for, so, on the, on her option number two or three, whatever that was. Because I just, that IT area, it's been security breach issue.
Mayor, may I?
Before, before, before we continue, I'm gonna, Africa Corre, I'm sorry.
Yes, Mayor, I'd just like to add that I understand Derek's concern, but I also understand that we might be having some financial issues, depending on how everything turns out. But what about those buildings that we have, that we lease out? I don't know where those leases are up, but can one of those leases, when it's up, be dedicated for IT?
Like which one?
Well, right now, I'm, the one I can think is.
Inetit?
Yeah, for example, that one, or the one next to the courthouse. Are they still city buildings? The one on B where the old water department used to be?
That's being used.
That's being used by Parks and Recreation. And I'm gonna have to relay that question to Derek, to see if he would be able to move the centralized rooms, the servers.
For, 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 for clarification, we're not saying we're not gonna do the city hall expansion. What we're talking about is phasing it into phases. One, we're gonna have to plan for this. This is not gonna be built in six months. It's probably gonna get built later part of next year fiscal year, so we can split this up. We're not saying, Derek, you're not gonna get your expansion. What we're saying is, we're dividing the cost, and the thing is, or can we build this in three months?
No, because the plan process, the design, market action, everything is gonna take at least three to four months. And they're from their plan reviews, and whatever needs to be done, I mean, they will probably want to break ground and do it.
There's no problem, there's no problem splitting the, splitting the cost. And so, so we're not saying no. What we're, what we're doing is, we're splitting the cost to minimize. I know with those, those cuts we talked about earlier, we can actually do it. But by doing this, we're actually adding a cushion. For, for, it would make it easier for Monica, and for everyone else. So I suggest we split this in half, and we phase it in, and we actually build. I can tell you right now, IT needs to be bigger, I realize that. And the thing is, we're not saying no, we're just expanding, and we wanna make sure. What if, let's say, for example, we have another 125,000 left, with Monica doing her magic? And so, I mean, we can actually invest more in the IT. So we're not saying no on this project, we're saying, let's split it.
Yeah, I agree, Mayor, I believe phasing it out is the best. We know IT department is very important, so we need to phase it out, prepare, and the planning and all that. So we need to get things done.
Yeah, and I, and I agree with Gloria. And the thing is, we need to emphasize on the, on the, on the, on the projects that will impact, low cost, high impact. Our community, right now, we're gonna be suffering, I can tell you right now. What, what, what we're seeing, what, we've seen their numbers, and the thing is, we're gonna, we're gonna be seeing, we're gonna be hurting. And the thing is, because we are going into a depression, not a recession, a depression. And I think when that occurs, building will stop, people will stop buying homes. And the thing is, unfortunately, it's something that's gonna happen, and we have to plan for it. So, no, I agree, projects focused on our community, and the thing is, but yet, we need that IT for all those, we need to be, IT needs to be in our building, basically. Because the vast majority of information comes from our building. Or else we were gonna invest, I believe we're gonna invest in our own fiber optics, that's gonna be expensive. So, no, that, that's my opinion.
And if I may, also, to, to continue on Mr., on Africa's question. In the past, IT was separated, and we had to bring them closer to, they had to be in sync, because IT is one of the most important, I think, departments that works with all the other departments. I mean, if they have a computer issue, or they have some kind of IT issue, if they're in a separate building, I mean, right, then they'll need another van. And then the time and loss is gonna be lost, they need to be in the building with administration, where they're able to control and secure our data. Like I said, I've been back there, and I know they're tight and everything, but I think since they barely got quotes, and they need to go through the plan process, and review, and all this stuff, I think that's the smart thing to do, and split it up in phases, and if, like the mayor said, and if we have extra funding at the end of the year, and they get it done faster, then we look at it at that time and do a change order. And that'll help the situation today.
No, I get it, I get it, Matias, I was just thinking of an option in case that we couldn't do it right here and now for them. Because I've been back there also, and I see that they're on top of each other, per se. But, you know, a quick fix with an existing building, and I, I mean, I don't know how much it would cost to equip it for them to move in, which it might be more than what it's worth, but it was just a thought. Food for the pot, Mayor.
Sí, gracias.
Like Africa, I didn't know those were being used, but they're being used. I asked the same question, and I'm like, oh damn, they're being used by.
They're all being used.
Even the water department that's being used too.
So, so are we on for, for the city hall expansion to phase it in two phases, and commitments?
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Gloria? I know you don't wanna, you don't wanna do it, period. It's okay, it's your opinion.
The thing is, 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 everything can do it, but right now, with the situation that we have right now, we think, we need to be careful. I mean, we have to be careful what we expand, and what we, people are seeing, like, like people are a struggle for, for food, or struggle for unemployment, and we're doing something that, that, I mean, it is, it is, it is wisely to think about it for, for next year. But right now, with the situation, I don't think people, it's gonna be, look, we're struggling, and, and the, and the council is expanding, it's getting new cars, and things like that. I don't, I don't think it's wisely to do that, I mean. But for next, our next budget, or, or next time, I mean, we can, we can, I mean, it's good to, to be getting bigger the city hall. But this is my opinion, I'm sorry.
No, thank you, no, that's fine. Jose Ponse, your comments concerned?
Okay, I know, I'm, I'm, I'll never get to the first base myself. Okay, I agree with Gloria also, but then, also, I agree with you guys, that we need IT, entire building. And I, I wish we could keep the building, entire building for the IT. So my idea was to move some of the other offices to some other places. Find some, some, find some vacant buildings for, for the, the solid offices. And leave, leave the building for the IT. They do, they do need a space. I agree with you guys. IT, IT is the nerve of the city, you know? So I, I think we can move some of the other offices, I mean, someplace, or find, or find some, some, some other locations.
Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor?
What buildings, what buildings are you recommending, Ponse?
No, I said.
What empty buildings are you recommending?
No, no, I said, I said, find some other places, I don't know. I mean, or maybe build some other places, but I mean, leave the, leave the building, leave the building for IT. I know, Matias, I know, I know, that's what I'm saying. I never get to the first base myself. I know, I will never get to the first base.
Thank you, one by one, one by one, okay. Vice Mayor, are we done, Vice Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I'm sorry, we're the next person, and I want to, I want everyone to say something. Councilmember Africa Nacarasco?
Yes, Mayor, I think my opinion, we should hold off on the entire project for next budget. In my opinion, with that money, I would rather hire an extra police officer, or do something else.
Okay, thank you. Matias?
I've already said my piece, Mayor.
Thank you. Mario?
It's a tough one, it's a tough one, I'll be honest with you. I mean, we're growing, yes. At this time, I don't know if we're hiring more IT personnel, and giving them another desk, or more, or more space for someone else coming into the team. It's hard, it is hard, I know they need the space, but I'm not too sure if it's time for, for that right now. I wish I can say, be more positive on this one, and just say, let's go on with this. But I think if they get organized, and clean their stuff around, and move things around, and and make it more private, and build a, like a cubicle wall, a taller wall, whatever, I mean, for their privacy, let's, let's, let's begin on that area, and let's save that money for something else.
Okay, okay, this is, thank you, thank you. Councilmember Cannon, this is what's going on with IT.
As you well know, we should look at the way we do things differently now. Everything is going IT, everything is going via computer. Security, one of our biggest things. A lot of municipalities are invested in security. In security, and who runs the security? IT. So IT is becoming as important as our police station, and as our fire. Because as we speak, or there's constantly people trying to hack into our system. You can ask Derek, and the thing is, we are, not only are they IT, but also they have to make sure that we are, we can actually run. We are, we, we will be doing a lot more video conferencing, it's a fact. Now, you mentioned other, you mentioned other, other buildings. Well, in order for us to have the speed, and the wavelength, in order for us to function properly, we need to invest in IT information technology, and we are gonna have to invest in servers. We are going to have to invest, and this is the technology. We're already behind technology. Our computers, our programs, we're already behind security. So do we wanna, do we wanna expose ourselves? Because we have been hacked before, we've been very fortunate, but this is reality. Everyone is investing in IT, everyone is investing in new technology for security. Cyber theft, I mean, it's a growing crime. And the thing is, we cannot let IT down. We can hold off, and we will be behind another year, in regards to safety, in regards to our information, our billing, our credit cards, all that information, IT needs to protect it. So when you say worthwhile, we should wait, we should, we should actually invest in our security. Because we're being hacked constantly. So that's why I believe we should invest in our security, invest in IT. Because, have you guys noticed, everyone is going via, via webs, web seminars, our high schools, our universities, and guess what? It's security. They're the new police officers of our internet, and we have to have solid. And I understand Derek, he gets frustrated, because they have no room. Our servers, we're gonna have more servers, they're gonna need more room for expansion. And our servers are not getting any smaller, unfortunately. Unless we invest a lot of money into it. So all we're talking is phasing this out, not removing it, investing in our IT department and our future. Because unfortunately, our future is in computers. That's a fact. We don't want to, but it's a fact. So we need to invest in our technology, we need to invest in our security. And unfortunately, unfortunately, there are people out there seeking information, important information, like our credit cards, and our information that we hold, that need investment. So, so we need to be careful if they're already behind. So if we decide not to do anything about it, then we're gonna have a problem with safety. That's all I can say.
Well, everything that you say right now, we don't know those things, we're not alert to that. I don't hear from Derek, I don't hear from Tadeo that they really need that. You see, all that, all that that you're telling us, you're making it more prioritized to that department. And I understand, I want it too, don't get me wrong. But then, how about if we start shaving, from building safety, a truck? Another truck, another vehicle, you see? Let's shave those, those guys that is not taking care of our security, or hacking. Just give it the priority to IT, and let's make it simple.
I, I agree.
Great comment, Mario, great comment.
I agree, because.
I agree with Mario as well.
Yes.
Yeah, no, and the thing is, and the thing is, I know Derek thinks about it, and the thing is, no, I've been reading about it, I've been hearing about it, and it's something that we need to invest heavily. And I've always said, we need to be updated. We're updated with our fire, we're updated with our police, we are, I mean, we are, we have the best train, best equipment, but we also need to invest in our security, in our IT department, and they're gonna be, they're gonna need so, so I agree. Let's, let's, let's shave some items, and actually make sure that we actually have that expansion there. But I don't mind phasing it in, I really don't, so.
Mayor, if I may add something?
Matias, correct.
By expanding the IT building, we're also expanding the footprint for planning and zoning, and building inspections, correct?
That is correct. It is, it is for the three departments.
Okay, so we, we have an IT that is huddled right now with building for inspectors, plan reviewers, and everything. And when we get the complaints from the community, from the developers, from the residents, that our inspectors are behind on work and everything, but again, if we don't give them the tools that they need to have the space, and if we're gonna hire another plan checker, plan inspector, or city inspector, by expanding this wing of the building, we're allowing for those people to be able to do what they need to do, to get the stuff done faster, and move forward, and help the community grow. So I agree, I agree with Mario as well, I mean, if there's other things we need to cut, I mean, we don't need a Suborado for building safety right now. They can do another year for, I mean, IT's been driving the same van for 10 years, we joke about it, but it's true. So let's find a way to cut 50, 60, 80,000 there, and then that way, we hopefully don't have to do the phases. And again, I keep on going back to that we're solid, we have good reserves. So for this 300,000, and we're going back and forth, I think we've done more than enough, and our diligence to figure this out, and I think we've come out to a lot of great ideas on what, where we could stay to avoid having to do that.
Okay, Monica, could you, could you tally the amount that, that's, that's, Matias, that, well, that's taking the city hall expansion in phases, or taking it out? Or actually leaving it as is?
I will leave it as it is, but again, that's my opinion.
Right now, I just wanna remind everyone that the task that we have is very difficult. It's not an easy task, and, and, and all the projects are very, very important. And if we think about it, we were just talking about streets, and we spent an hour going back and forth on what projects should we leave in streets, and we couldn't make out our mind. And now, we went back to general fund, to see how much we can help streets, and it's still difficult to let go of projects in general fund. So we need to really put our priorities of what we really wanna do. Everything is important, and this is a difficult task that is in your hands. You know better than I do what is priority for the city. You just let me know what your priorities are, and I will make everything I can to make them happen.
Well, Monica, we're actually telling you exactly what's our priority? And the thing is, and every year, we go through this, and it's never easy. And, and, and the thing is, we spend, on the average, I, I counted three, four hours we're gonna spend on this stuff.
Yeah, and we can keep, we can keep moving right now with the general fund, and say, okay, let's put it in phase out, let's see how much we get to. And then we can say, you know what? I think that we need to go back, because it still is not enough for what we wanna do in streets. Or who knows, we might get what we need to leave the projects that we want in the street, or we. or we realize that the streets is not as important as the other projects. But I think that we need to keep going to see how much we can get from there and see where we are, and we can leave it right now, phase it out, and keep moving, and let's see what we end up with.
Yeah. Are you talking about phasing out the city hall expansion?
If that is the consensus of that everybody wants to go that direction, we can leave it like that. We're gonna keep moving, and then, we're gonna say, okay, we got $300,000, $300,000 in savings or the reductions that will leave us only $50,000 for streets. So, but I think that we need to keep moving, and what we can do, because at the end of the day, we're gonna get to a number.
Yeah, we're gonna get there. We're gonna get there.
Yeah.
So, councilmembers, do we wanna phase the expansion? I suggest we phase it. And it makes it much easier for everything else. No sé. No sabemos? Ponse, I see you shaking your head.
Mayor?
Ponse, ponse.
Okay. Yes, well, one big question, Mayor, for you. The lease on the building for the Capicinos y Cintas, when it stops?
I don't know. I believe, I believe the lease is... Does anyone have the answer for that? Okay. But before your answer, how much will it cost us to put fiber optics? To do all the wiring? No, because you wanna know. The thing is, it's gonna cost us more than 250,000.
No, 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 I'm not talking about moving IT over there, Mayor. No, 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 not the offices, like, no, like, that's what I was talking about. Planning zoning, building inspectors, leave IT there. I mean, they need to stay there. You know, but I mean, some of the offices, I mean, this is just a comment. What about the call center? There's some empty spaces there, too.
It's gonna cost us over a billion dollars to actually, the other section, we would have to ask Pastor Castro to remove all his items from that area. And we would have to invest a million dollars in renovation. No? So, I can tell you.
Okay, no, 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 no.
So, yeah, all the buildings are being used at this point in time. And the thing is, we wanna, the reason why this city hall was designed this way is to have all the different departments live facilities be in one single space. That's smart. Maybe that worked then, but we have to be smart about it, and maybe we should look at all our buildings and actually assess what's the status of all the buildings. So, I agree.
Right, right.
We can do that.
Okay.
Councilmembers, the only lease we have is the ACT building. All the others that are occupied by outside people are on licenses, which can be revoked at any time.
Thank you for that point of clarification. So, basically, everyone's on a license, we can revoke at any time, except for the ACT.
Okay. Thank you.
So, do we wanna split it or do we wanna keep? I know, Matias, you wanna keep it, but I suggest we split it and make the job easier. And actually, we would actually be spending less time trying to figure out which van to buy and which IT gets, and so...
Like I said, I'm fine with split, as long as we get something done and phase it out, I'm fine. See, like I said, it's gonna take 20 months for them to even be ready to start anything, so I'm okay. It's just I need everybody to understand the importance of that department being expanded now or in the next two, three years. Because it isn't a function for the city, for every department.
Very much so. Thank you.
Okay. So, are we good to move down, ready to move down the list?
I would like to make a comment, Mayor. I would agree with you and phase it out. Let's get it started.
Okay, but it's very important we get started.
Yes.
Okay.
Africa?
I would want to wait for next budget.
Okay. Mario?
You already heard how I feel about it.
Okay, good. So, interesting. So, Tadeo, what's the verdict?
From what I heard, is to phase it out?
Yeah.
I mean, to move IT to another building and the connectivity issues and upgrading to retrofit an old building, it's very, very expensive, as you saw the email from Kay on the, what was it, on the museum. It's to retrofit that, I know it's a way older building, but it's, the cost to retrofit that one is almost as much to build a new one. It's about smart growth. I invite all of you to come and see how these employees work every day. Well, not right now, because we don't have, we're not fully, they're not here all day, full days, but they're shoulder to shoulder. They don't have any more space, and it's just not about cleaning out or cleaning out their offices. I mean, they don't have any storage, they don't have any conference rooms. They have been doing, I mean, not just IT, probably works and planning and zoning as well. They have been doing miracles with what they have. The servers need to be secure. $230,000, if we get hacked, our information will be up for ransom, and we would be paying way more than that. So, I mean, your call to...
A couple of million.
Yep, so you're called to risk it or not? I mean, I'm here to...
You can risk it.
To...
Yeah, no, no, you're right, you're right.
I mean, I agree with what you're saying, but it is what it is, and it's not about making the easy decision, but the right decision.
The right decision is what we're listening from the mayor. He wants, I mean, we need a city hall expansion because of our security, for the city's security, right? Let's start shaving the other areas that we don't really need. Let's move forward with it.
I agree.
That's, I mean, it's easy for me to say, but it sounds like it is something that we, they really need, and we need as a...
That's a good idea. Thank you, Mario. Gracias, Mario. Okay, let's shave, let's shave, let's shave 230,000 from the rest of the budget. Can we proceed?
Okay.
Can we keep it? And we shave 230,000. Let's look at the vehicles. Total available service. Replacement vehicle, the 2020 Equinox, that is for city clerk?
That was removed, that has been removed already.
Okay, so, so that doesn't count? So, did we count, so did we count that as a savings? Or no?
No.
They're going up a column I, Mayor. Column I is the stuff that we need to shave.
Third column I?
The third, the third column is what we need to shave.
Okay, okay, there we go. Okay.
And we've already shaved about 150,000 off of the 300 negative that we were, so we only need about 150,000. Again, it's either we subsidize that, move forward, or find another 150,000.
We find another, well, let's see here. Building safety, you're asking for three vehicles.
Eight? Two.
Two.
I will, that, oh, yeah, you're right, you're right, you're right. Okay. How bad do you need them? I've seen a lot of trucks, new trucks, going around.
It's to replace the, just old vehicles that they have, in which they do inspections, and Ralph, I know you communicate with inspectors a bit more than I do. Do you recall from our meeting, what was said about the two vehicles, why they need for the two vehicles?
They need it for inspections, but I would, I would scale that down to one instead of two.
Yes, correct. I agree.
And then, phase in the next one next year.
Okay, I suggest we do the double cap and get rid of the 2020 Chevrolet CC10903, the 26,700.
Mayor, man?
T, por favor.
How many vehicles do we have, like, for building inspection, safety? I'm saying because I don't see anyone answering that. I mean, I don't see anyone fighting for those vehicles. Tadeo doesn't know how bad they need them. Ralph says one.
Here's Mr. Veda, no? Oh.
Where's Jose?
Where's Jose on this one?
He should be here fighting for those vehicles.
They have a Jeep, and then they have Omar's old truck. They do need one, at least one.
Yes, they have, there's...
How many inspectors do we have?
Three.
Three.
Okay. Yeah, let's give them the double cap. They can probably put more people, and actually, they can actually take rides to the different sites, I guess. Before cap, the quad cap is a lot more, I think we can do a lot more with it. So, I'm still, let's get rid of item number 27.
Okay.
So, will we just one vehicle or two?
Just one vehicle. So, they would be keeping...
We're keeping the 27,380.
Okay, could you scroll down?
Mayor, may we go back to Jenny's budget?
Jenny's budget, total economic development? Yeah.
Yes. I think Jenny, Jenny's in the chambers.
Yes, she is.
So, she and I had a discussion today regarding line item 37. Jenny, do you mind?
I'll cut 100,000.
The 200,000.
All right, tell me about this one. I mean, we've always...
All right, here we go.
The incentive policy.
Yes, we did, this is Jenny Torres, economic development. Ralph and I discussed it. Based on the current situation, I think it's gonna be slow this COVID-19 is probably gonna rise up again in the fall, so we already lost half a year. I think it's gonna be a while before companies start relocating. We did hear that a lot of companies from China wanna move back into North America, but I think they're probably gonna go into Mexico. So, I think it's gonna be a while before we get a company coming in. So, if you're looking for funding, that might be something that we could put off. And Ralph and I were gonna discuss with Legal to see if there was a way, if a company did come in, if there was a way that we can commit funding, but not fund it till the next fiscal year.
Can we use contingency fund?
That item is in contingency fund already. Oh, no, it is in special services.
No, no, it's special services, yeah.
Okay, Mayor.
The 200,000 incentive policy does in the council budget, but we put it there for awareness, because it's a big ticket item that is there, but it's pretty much always, it is budgeted in the council budget.
Okay, worst case scenario, a company comes in, I think we can move 100,000, so if we cut that in half...
Well, Mayor, I guess what we're saying is, we may not need the entire 200,000.
Right, I agree with you guys on that, too.
So, cut in half?
Jenny? That's what I would recommend. Again, if a company comes in, we'll figure it out, but when they do come in, and we'll try to either go into contingency, or if we can come up with a special agreement to fund the next fiscal year. So, we can look into that in the future, but if you're looking to cut some funding, that might be an option.
Good deal.
So, we cut in half? So, that's what tally now? That gives us how much?
Okay, so 100K, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Ralph. So, Ralph, before we actually dedicate another two hours to this, what other recommendations do you recommend, Ralph?
You know, Mayor, this coming budget will probably be very tricky. It's a lot of unknowns, and we're budgeting as if all the revenues are gonna come in, which I personally doubt. So, maybe not so much free deleting, but changing our buying habits, our purchasing, and delaying those until Monica has a good sense of where we're at financially, so that you can make those decisions.
I agree with you. We actually, we should be changing our policies, and the thing is, my biggest concern is that we approve this and people start buying tomorrow.
Exactly. So, I don't know how to proceed, I don't know how Monica would recommend.
Yeah, Ralph, and thank you for bringing that up. That is part of the contingency alternative that I presented in the budget retreat. Once we have the balanced budget, I want to remember everyone, we are not being pessimistic, because we wanna plan for the best case scenario. But also, we wanna plan for the worst case scenario, because we don't know what is gonna happen. So, part of the contingency budget in putting there 800,000 of projects, pretty much that's how we are protecting the city. Pretty much, we won't spend that until we see that we really are getting the revenues, there can support those expenditures. But if we don't get them, we wanna spend them. Like I mentioned in the budget retreat, not because we have the authority to spend it. We have to spend it. We need to exercise fiscal responsibility.
And to echo, we're just, I'm sorry. What just said, Monica and I had talked about this, and we had agreed that coming July 1st, we were not gonna let big purchases be made until she has a good sense and what the, where are we with what, everything that is going on. So, Ralph is right on spot on what Monica and I were planning, to start purchases either until the third or fourth quarter, depending on our revenues. Is that correct, Monica?
Yes.
On our plan?
Yes.
Monica, that would be the smart thing to do, and the thing is, we need to wait, probably to the second quarter, seriously, and the thing is, it is smart, Tadeo, Ralph, Monica, I think it's so. I just wanna make sure that staff understand, just because the budget gets approved, I don't want you buying everything and everything on your budget line, on the first two months of our budget, so, no, I agree. That's a great suggestion.
Yeah, that is not intended, and just, and just so you know, yesterday, I had my county managers meeting, and City of Yuma, Somerton, and county are doing the same. And actually, county unfortunately has to, they have about 30 million in the rainy day fund, and they're gonna have to use 5 million, you know, in order to accommodate. But they're also planning on not starting any purchases either until October or January of 2021, due to the lack of, I mean, to the, not lack of uncertainty, to the uncertainty that we have on the revenues we're gonna receive.
I agree.
Yeah, and also, I just want to remind everyone, right now, the reductions that finance is proposing are for the best case scenario. So, it's still, like, we need those reductions, and when I look into the information that I have, last year, our capital project adopted budget was 8.5 million. And right now, we are proposing a budget of 11.3 million. It's 2.7 million more than last year, and last year, we didn't have this unstable outlook. So, right now, we are using the positive balances that we have to make more with what we have, but we are being very aggressive right now with the proposal that we have. We have so many projects there, more than last... more than last year, and the outlook looks more uncertain.
Well, well, it's very, it's very simple. We, we hold off on spending, uh, what was budgeted. And the thing is, it's based on, on, on the current situation. We just said it. We hit that, we just right there and then. Uh, yes, we, we're gonna approve a budget. We're gonna have approved those numbers. But let's make sure that, uh, we actually start, uh, using that money at, uh, towards the second quarter of our budget. For the second half of our budget. So it makes sense. It's a responsibility. That's what it is.
My tally comes to five hundred and fifty-one thousand so far.
That's everything gets included? That's, uh, half of the light and half, and, and removal of certain projects?
You're right. Half of the light, half of Jenny's, half of the phasing out the building expansion. If we phase that out, the car, the truck, I even added ten thousand dollars for the engineering for the bicycle lane. Jenny doesn't need that. I could wait probably, but not that five fifty-one.
Bicycle lanes.
I mean, it's for the design concept. And right now with everything that's going on, I mean, ten thousand there, that's ten thousand there.
And, uh, and just, and just to remember, uh, this is, uh, our, you know, ceiling of expenses, you know, before we make any purchase or move forward with any projects, we come before you for your approval, you know, and then if at that time you, you think we're, we're not economically healthy, you can always, you know, turn us down.
Did we, uh, okay, that's good. How about fifty-two? I thought we were gonna remove fifty-two?
Yes, we did. We said that.
Yeah, I forgot about that one. So I fifty-two, if I add that into the spreadsheet, I fifty-two, uh, that gives us six hundred and thirty-five thousand. Well, I think we're good there. Was what they asked started. Way better.
How does that sound, Monica?
Uh, to what I have, uh, I have, uh, removed the suburban for city council, phased out, uh, the city hall, uh, remove, uh, a vehicle from development, splitting half the incentive policy for Jenny, and remove the lights, uh, eighty-four thousand. It's, the total is three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. So with that one, leave us one hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars to do, uh, something in Herve. So we will only need to reduce on Herve five hundred and forty-five hundred thousand dollars.
I was including that, the phasing out of the, the two fifty that we had set for the tenth street and Cesar Chavez. That's where I was coming up with the six thirty-five, including the two fifty deduction there. I don't know how you calculate that on your, you said.
Mayor, I have, I have a question for Monica.
Please, please proceed.
Monica, how much is phase three, the final dollar amount for phase three of the salary adjustment?
The phase three, it is, I have the numbers here. Hold on. Um, it is seven hundred and forty-five thousand.
And you plan on doing an increment right away, right?
Uh, I'm sorry, Ralph. That was the a hundred percent, but since we're doing the phased out, the total, uh, reduction is five hundred thousand dollars. So five hundred thousand dollars is that total salary adjustment. However, for the general fund, uh, is four hundred thousand dollars.
So what, 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 you're phasing it? How are you phasing? What percentage are you phasing in at a time?
Uh.
For the salary?
For the salary, we are facing it in three stages. The first stage is, uh, start in August, and is for all the employees. There are less than ninety percent, uh, to the market rate. Uh, so that will be effective only for those employees.
What is the amount? What is the, that amount?
The amount for those employees is one hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars.
Okay. Second phase?
Second phase is for the employees. There are less than ninety-five percent, and that will be effective in November. And the total for those employees is a hundred and eighty-six thousand. And the third phase.
What, what happens if you don't have a revenue in November? What happens to the employees?
Yeah.
Yeah, for me, for me, my recommendation, I will feel more comfortable when I'm, when I talk about the contingency budget, I will feel more comfortable putting this ticket item there because this is a long-term item. Uh, and definitely, I wouldn't wanna start paying out an employee if I don't know if I'm gonna be able to do it at a long term. So for me, it's key to know that really we're gonna be having the consistent stream of revenues uh, this year and on, and that situation with this COVID nineteen is, uh, uh, controlled or, or, or contained. That's why my recommendation will be to put this ticket item there and start to release it if the revenue comes in. But, uh, uh, this will be something that, uh, I don't know what council thinks about that.
I don't think we can afford five hundred thousand in total.
And that's also another alternative. Like, we don't, I know that, again, we have worked very hard to bring our employees to market. Uh, we also can do only the ones that are below ninety percent. And, uh, maybe for this year, put a halt to those employees, to the employees that are, uh, above ninety percent and only bring to, uh, closer to their target to the employees that are below. And if we do that, we can save two hundred and seventy-four thousand for the general fund. And more for the other funds, but, uh, right now, since the concentration is a general fund.
Yeah, no. Uh, the thing is, uh, when we, when we set up to, 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 uh, do our salary survey and salary adjustments, COVID was never, was never, never taken into account.
Exactly, yeah.
There's people losing jobs. There are a lot of people, over thirty million people have lost their jobs. And the thing is, uh, very few people are actually getting raises at this point in time. I don't know of, of anyone. If anyone, uh, people's, uh, cuts, uh, paychecks are being cut in quarters. And, and, uh, we, we, the city hall, the city council, we've been very working on trying to, uh, bring our salaries up to, up to par. But at this point in time, I don't agree in, in actually spending five hundred thousand. We can probably do the first phase and have, and have the second phase be as a maybe, depending what we, what, what we have. I, I think, uh, we should not, not do it. But I think we should do, we, we should actually do the first phase, which is gonna cost us, what is it, a hundred and thirty-five thousand? And, and ha, and actually make the second phase a hundred and sixty-six, pending on what we, if we have actually get the money. And not have a third phase, not yet, until the following year. Because, uh, you said it, we were not sure. And the thing is, what, what are we gonna tell our, our residents also? Everyone's, everyone's out of job, people. I mean, and, and the thing is, we need to be careful also. Employees need to understand that we're in a crisis. And we don't know. There's a lot of uncertainty. And I think, and, but I think we have been working. I think phase one should, should occur. Phase two should be a maybe. Depending on, on our income and depending on the situation, because we will be going into a depression, not a recession. And it's gonna take years before we recover. So I don't know what you guys think. Gloria? You're, you're, you're in mute, Gloria. You're on mute.
Mayor, I agree with you. Uh, I know that our priority are the, uh, the employees. But in this, in this situation that we have right now, it is good that employees has a job because a lot of people, a lot of friends of mine, they don't have job. And they're, uh, struggled right now. So I agree with you, Mayor.
Thank you. Jose Ponce?
Uh, same thing. I agree with you, Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, Vice Mayor? Vice Mayor?
Yes, sir. That's a good, good, um, deal.
Thank you. Africa?
Mayor, I like what you said about phasing it out, uh, the first phase possibly second, and then perhaps in the future, look into, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Africa. Matias?
I think, I think it'd be smarter than us to wait on that last part of it. That way we could see how the sales tax revenue comes in and so forth. I mean, I, I'm being optimistic. I think it's gonna come in good, but it's better be safe than sorry. So, yeah, I agree with you on that part. Uh, and hopefully, there's no need to do it, but at least we're prepared for it.
Thank you, Matias. Mario?
I agree also on what you said. And it's gonna sound funny, but don't forget the stimulus check you guys got. That's a plus.
Yeah, it's a plus. And the thing is, it's helping everyone. And the thing is, well, mostly everyone. Um, no, take that into account. So, uh, Monica, it's, uh, it's a phase one. It's, it's a go. Phase two is, is depending on the economy, depending on the situation, depending on the, on the income generated. Uh, I wanna be as optimistic as Matias, and, and hopefully, we'll, we'll get a, we'll get good numbers. Uh, so, um, third phase is gonna have to wait.
Okay, so are we phasing, phase three is the one that we're gonna be optimistic and see what happens, or phase two?
Phase two is gonna be optimistic. We're not gonna give three phases. That's, that's five hundred thousand.
It's, it's a goal for phase one. It's, uh, maybe for phase two, and it's, uh, let's wait until next year for phase three, if I'm understanding correctly. Correct, Mayor?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay, so, uh, it pretty much, right now, that's pretty much what we were proposing, phasing it out. The only thing that we can move this into the contingency, except for the phase one, we can leave that out. Uh, so if we move into contingency the phase two and remove the phase three, we will be saving eighty-eight thousand dollars that we won't be spending.
That doesn't make sense to me then for all, if that's our, yeah.
Yeah, it's one hundred and thirty-five for phase one, one eighty-six for phase two, and eighty-eight thousand for phase three.
Okay, but if that's if we do phase one and phase two, and then a maybe on phase three, right?
Yeah, and if we, and, 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 and for me, it's, it's like, if we're trying to, uh, hold it, it's better to be very, uh, I know that we all wanna wait for, expect for the best, but it's better to have a clear direction on what we wanna do. And, uh, I just wanna make sure that, that you understand the effect of how much is reducing the bottom line of the decisions. So this decision is only reducing about eighty-eight thousand.
That's not much to me. So I don't agree. I'd say we leave it the way it's supposed to be and find something else somewhere else.
For everything is a hundred thousand, but the biggest ticket items is the phase one and the phase two. The first two are the biggest ticket items.
Because, excuse me, Mayor, um, may I say something, please?
Please, Corinna, press it.
Uh, well, we did say phase two will be a maybe, correct?
Yes, but it, it is some, if it's a maybe, uh, Vice Mayor, it is like pretty much what we're trying to do with a contingency budget. It's things that we wanna put there that if things going well, we wanna spend them. But right now, as I mentioned, we are two million dollars over. We wanna put, we wanna, we don't wanna adopt a budget that is so complicated that we put two million dollars in contingency, and at the end of the day, we're gonna be trying to not to figure out what we're gonna do there. So that's why I was trying to have a basic scenario budget that we already know that is most likely that whatever is there, we're gonna do it. We don't wanna put in a realistic budget, and no matter what, especially in this situation, we, we never wanna have enough revenue in to do all the projects that are there. We can say, yes, let's put everything in, but at the end of the day, we're not gonna be able to do it, and everybody's, like, it's gonna be difficult for me to hold on that. And once it is there, it is, uh, authorized, and I'm, I know I'm gonna be a challenge for me saying, no, we don't have enough revenue. I don't wanna have to be struggling all year because we have two million dollars budget adopted, but realistically, we wanna be having that revenue in. That's what I was hoping that we can have at least a more realistic budget.
Okay. Well, let me, let me put it this way. Uh, I, I would recommend do the phase one and not do phase two and three. Uh, and, and actually have next year, depending on, depending on our, 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 our economic situation, uh, then think, I think about phase two and three. At this point in time, I think we do, we do need to do, uh, a phase in. I think, uh, we should reface phase one and just not, not, not do anything else. And the thing is, how can we tell our residents? That we're, we're, we're actually, while everyone's losing their jobs? No. Uh, I, I think, uh, we can't stop, but I think, uh, one thirty-five thousand and actually not budget for, for phase two and three. Everyone is making a sacrifice. And the thing is, we, everyone. And the thing is, we've done a lot compared to, uh, three years ago. Our salaries are, have improved. I'm sorry, but, but, but because of COVID, because of the whole situation, because of the economic situation, we cannot give you, actually go to, to the two phases. So I recommend we only do one phase and wait till next year and see. That's, that's my feeling. It's easier. Well, eighty-eight thousand is not much, but now you add, what is it, a hundred and, uh, was it a hundred eighty-six for eighty thousand?
Yes, if I take.
That's how much.
If I take into consideration eliminating the phase two, uh, it gives me, uh, let me do it very quickly. Yeah. Six fif, six, if I taking consideration all the reductions that we have made plus the salaries, it gives me six hundred and fifty thousand. And if I take the, what we needed to balance, I have four hundred thousand dollars to do projects in Herve. So I.
So I, I'm sorry to listen to you. Que paso?
So if we eliminate the phase two and three and we delay it to next year, and I take in consideration all the reductions that we have done, I have, uh, six hundred and fifty thousand
Okay.
in reductions, and I needed two hundred and fifty-one thousand in the general fund. So that leaves us four hundred thousand dollars that we can, uh, support Herve to complete projects. So we will only need a reduction in Herve of two hundred and seventy thousand dollars.
Well, I, I need everyone's opinion. And the thing is, because, uh, I, I, I find it very difficult. And the thing is, people need to understand that, uh, uh, we don't know what's gonna happen. We don't know. If we go into a depression, we're not gonna recover in six months. We're gonna, we're not gonna recover in one, two, maybe three years. So, so at this point in time, we're, we're not forlowing. We're not, uh, actually, uh, people are not losing their jobs. Uh, and the thing is, uh, uh, we're not cutting personnel, and that's our goal. And the thing is, it's job security, like Gloria says. And the thing is, we wanna make sure that we have the employees. We wanna make sure, uh, that we, we can afford the health insurance that we offer our employees. Um, but, and the thing is, it's uncertain. And the thing is, we're not gonna go broke. We're not gonna go bankrupt. Uh, that's our main goal. We've been running lean, unfortunately. And, uh, and, and the thing is, uh, I just find it difficult. And so, uh, that's, that's, that would be my recommendation. But I need to hear from the rest of the council members. Not because pretty soon everyone's gonna believe, well, the mayor said this. No, I wanna make sure that everyone, I wanna hear everyone's opinion on this one. It's very important. Councilman Gloria?
Yes, Mayor, I agree with you in this one. I really agree with you. We have to be, be very careful. I know it is tough, uh, uh, for a lot of people, and, uh, uh, probably next year we can do better. I mean, it, this isn't, this isn't going on all the years, but I agree with you, Mayor. Uh, I really agree with you in this one.
Thank you, Gloria. Jose Ponce?
Yeah, I agree with you, Gloria, too. This is a hard decision. It's a tough one. Yeah, I agree with you, uh, Mayor.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Mayor, I, is there any, is there any way we can cut more vehicles? I, I, I really was so supportive of the pay raise, the phasing in the pay schedule because, you know, I understand we've gotta be careful, but this is our employees. I don't know, I, I think we can look for some more budget cuts. There's a couple of Silverado pickup here and there that maybe we can cut back. I don't know.
Yeah, and the thing is, when we, when we talk about salaries, it's forever and ever. That is, that is something that is not a one-time event, like a vehicle. It is something that we, we have to stick to, to, to our budget and it can't be less. If we, if we, if we, if we commit to the 500,000, realistically speaking, that means we're gonna have to commit for the, for the rest. Basically, this is your salary and we're committing to, there is no minimum. If we lose money, if we lose income, and let's say for example, COVID decides to show its ugly face in September, October, along with the influenza, we're really gonna hit, we're really gonna hit bottom. And the thing is, there's a lot of communities that are, that are thinking of filing for bankruptcy. And it's something we don't wanna have. And the thing is, our employees need to understand also, this is a tough situation. And the thing is, unfortunately, there's gonna be people that are gonna promise all kinds of things, they're gonna give all kinds of salaries. But realistically, if you look at the numbers, look at our numbers. We're, we're already running a lean budget. And the thing, how much more lean can you run? I mean, do we sacrifice what other councils did in the past? Okay, well, we, we stopped fixing our roads, we could get 500,000 there. We could stop investing our infrastructure, our water filtration system. People can come and actually give us the dirty water. When was the last time someone came to council with a jug full of dirty water? When was the last time? We had invest, we had invest money. And the thing is, but then again, you're gonna have your, 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 your regular politician promise that we're gonna increase your raises, we're gonna do this. At what expense? At what price? We have never fixed our roads, we are fixing our roads. We, I mean, we've invested in San Luis Obispo now. Please tell me where San Luis Obispo has not improved. Our salaries have improved. I mean, I wish I could tell you. And the thing is, no, it's, it's difficult, it's very difficult. And the thing is, and people need to understand, it's, it's, it's hard. It's not, this is not an easy decision. This is not easy as promising, I'm gonna give you everyone a raise and not actually look at the numbers. We actually looking the numbers. It's a very difficult situation. And the thing is, I thank you council. And it's, it's very tough. It's not a popular decision. I realize that. And, and, but if, if we can cut, but we need to find 186,000 to, 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 to save that phase two. If we can find 180,000 but forever and ever? That's, that's the question. That's my biggest concern. When Monica says that, and the thing is, when you talk about salaries, it's forever and ever, basically. Unless you start cutting employees. And it's difficult. It's, it's, and I understand Vice Mayor, it's not easy, it really is not easy. But I'm asking our employees to understand something, that, that we are trying our best to, to provide you with the best health insurance we have. We try, we try to keep you at a, at a four-day schedule. We haven't talked about working that fifth day. There's certain benefits that you're getting right now to save money. I mean, do we need to go back to, to, to five days a week? That's the other question. So, so these, these topics no one wants to talk about, but unfortunately, COVID-19 changed everything. And the thing is, people, people know, people are going through a lot of crisis right now. And people are struggling, there's, there's husband and wife at risk of losing their homes. And so, I don't know, maybe I'm talking too much, but that's how I feel. So, I'm gonna ask for us to council, see what they say. Thank you Vice Mayor. Bye vamos, vamos, vamos. Africa? Thank you.
No Mayor, I agree with you. Under the circumstances that we're facing, it is what it is. I also was for the salary adjustment myself, but considering the circumstances, it's, I feel like I have no choice but to do the right thing, which is to do what you suggested.
Thank you. Matias? Thank you Africa.
Question on the, this is probably local problem. Were we gonna be phasing out the, the right away that Sessa Chavez and Ford?
That's a good question. On Sessa Chavez and Ford, actually, right now, it doesn't fall under the HIRF budget. It falls under the streets impact fee. So, but your, actually, for your question, we are still working on the right away. There was a big curve thrown at us for that one. Not, not, it wasn't expected. We're, we still can't figure it out. We'll be meeting with the state to see where they get those numbers from. But as far as the funding for that project, right now is 100% funded out of the impact fees, not out of the HIRF.
Okay.
The only setback to that situation is that depending on the priority, I know that there is a grant involved and getting ahead on the project that it might require. I don't know exactly like how optimistic can we get about like the price of the right away. But it might be also at one point that the general fund, even though that is funded by the impact fees, that the general fund might need to step in and, so that, to make it happen.
Okay, I was just wondering because of the amount that's there. Okay.
Yeah, yeah, just, just to clarify Monica, so, so on the, the potential grant, future grant, it would be for the entire corridor. It would be all the way from San Luis plus the drive all the way to Avenue E. So yeah, we, we might, we might explore those options eventually.
At one point, we're gonna need to figure it out how to make it happen. Yeah, it's, it's gonna be challenging, given right now the cost that it was provided to us.
Okay, thank you Monica, thank you. Okay. Matias, anything else?
That's it Mayor.
Thank you. Mario, please?
Yeah Mayor, I just wanted to mention to everyone, let's not forget, Mayor, when we came in in 2008, it's been a long time. We were in recession, we were in toughest crisis. I mean, I mean, we took care of our cities somehow and we came along with our strong people and we survived this, right? So we might be in another situation like it, you know, I mean, oh God, I mean, can all, but when it comes to worst, I mean, you know, I think we did a great, we made hard, tough decisions, you know, back in the days when we made furloughs that you mentioned that you don't wanna do anymore. And in cutting here and cutting there and cutting essential people and non-essential, you know, stuff like that. I mean, and it is hard to make those decisions. But we also need to understand that when it comes to worst and, and making those kind of decisions there, it's not easy, it's not easy. People, maybe the employees or other people's families, they see that it's easier for us just to say bye-bye and see you in the future. It's not, it's not. And maybe it's not the same topic that we are talking right now, but yes, I would like to give them another salary adjustment there and I would like to have that money to do it, why not? I mean, everybody wants the same thing for our employees, but if it's not the time and if we don't have it, I mean, our employees understand that we're going through this pandemic, it's worldwide, it's not just our city. You know, they understand that, that they are happy, they are blessed that they have a job, you know? That's the way I see things, you know? I mean, maybe I'm saying too much and maybe my opinion goes a long way. But I, I always been strong about, about San Luis and we have the strong people here. And we have survived the one recession, remember that. One recession we have survived and, and we did it with great, with great people that made those, those big decisions. And I don't forget, I don't forget, I was part of it and it was hard. And, and I just, yes, I don't like to, I, I won't like to be in the same shoes again. But I mean, when it comes to worst, we're gonna have to make a decision. And, 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 and it scares me, and it scares me that you say that no furloughs, no layoffs. It scares me because at the end of the day, we're gonna have to make a decision on, on those areas too. And I just don't wanna promise anything at this moment and the way that we're going through.
And I, and I agree with you Mario, thank you. And, and thank you. Yeah, we were there. When, when we became council members, basically the, the city of San Luis was nearly bankrupt. We had to do some layoffs, we had to do some furloughs and those were tough decisions. And the thing is, we don't wanna go there. We don't wanna reach that point. Monica said, there's a lot of uncertainty out there. There's a lot of, a lot of communities, governments, local governments, small governments, they're, they're facing the same thing, not only small governments, but big governments, big city governments. The city of Los Angeles, for example, the city of New York. And the thing is, they're facing big, big budget cuts. And so Monica was right. We're talking as if we can approve all this budget, but we don't know how much money we're gonna have at the end of the day. I don't wanna be laying off people. I don't wanna be doing the same thing that happened in 2009 and 2008. But it's something we needed to do, unfortunately, but we had to. And, no, I agree with you Mario, thank you Mario. It's tough, it is really tough. So the question is,
So I'm sorry, I'm sorry Mayor. So council, I think it's time for right now to, to, to think about it. I mean, I know that, I think it's the time to adjust those numbers. Yes, that's why we're here, that's why we're doing this, that's why we have the professionals here telling us what's good, what's bad and what we need, what we don't need. But I mean, it is the time, it is, it is. This is the time to shave, to adjust numbers. And, and let's, let's, let's give our community some hope of bringing something new to our streets, to the city, something new that they can see every day and they can see that we're doing the best that we can in this tough times. Okay, I don't know, just.
Gracias Mario, no, so, so comment well noted. Gracias, thank you. So the consensus was to do one and hold off on the, on the, on the last two for the following year.
Mayor, if everything goes forward and we don't get into trouble and the numbers look fine towards the end of the year, are we able to come back, we're able to come back and revisit this, right, and do an adjustment if needed?
Monica? Ralph or Thadeo? Do we have, we have the budget for this, do we?
If it's, so the question is, if at the end of the year, we could do it if the money is there?
Yes.
If we don't hit the recession, COVID-19 flips around and everything continues forward and we see that everything's going normal, are we able to come back, like you mentioned on some of the other items, like Monica said earlier, we're able to come back and change stuff? It just doesn't mean it's set in stone. We have that option to come back at the council and say, you know what?
No, we would have to budget now and, and hold off the decision to implement it or not. If that happens, or we, or, so we need to leave it in the budget and then ma- maybe make a decision next year, not next fiscal year, but next year, January. But if it's not included in the budget, we cannot come back and, and do it. However, if we do have the revenues and it's budgeted, yes, you can definitely retro pay it to the employees.
We can do it, request a budget.
With the request of the budget increase.
Budget increase. But we will go with an adopted budget. But if the situation is so much better than we anticipate and we can, the way to do it, it will be coming to council and request a budget increase to what it was adopted. But right now, as we are moving, we're just removing it out from the budget because as it is, we still need to have that cushion for the contingency. This is just about things that, like I was mentioning, we are 2.7 million more than last year. So we are shaving it just so that it's more realistic, the numbers that we're trying to get.
Monica, can we leave it in there contingent upon their approval and how the, I thought it was better not to request a budget increase, but rather than to budget it and not spend it? That's what Katie used to say.
Yeah, Katie said a lot of things.
That's why I'm confused, because I've heard different versions. We used to hear that way, we used to hear this way. So I'm just trying to get options out there and, you know, just be thinking forward, like we're thinking forward that this might go negative, what if it doesn't?
Yeah, cities I think is very tough putting things that.
So it's be- it's better to come back and revisit and adopt an increase.
For me, I think it will be better because otherwise you have more commitment that is there and they will have the expectation that is, I think it's better to be more straightforward and transparent with the employee. Whereas to give them the, I think it's,
Right.
Yeah, that if it comes up, at this point, we, we just can come back and, and you know what, it's better. Who doesn't like good news? But I think that we will, we will be creating the expectation of something that it might not happen and maybe will be more demoralizing at the end of the day, putting there something that maybe we're not gonna do.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I, I agree, I agree. We've been, this, this council has been very generous and the thing is, we have been working hard with the employees. We, we, we've been trying to do the right thing for the past 10 years and we've done, we've done so far. Most, a lot of our employees are up to 90%, some of them are 95%. They're not at 100%, but they're a lot higher than they were when we first started. And so, and so if someone can say we haven't increased our salaries, yes, we have. And the thing is, been type of crisis, at this point in time, tough decisions need to be made. And I'm asking council to make those tough decisions. Our employees, we take care of our employees. We make sure, we make sure that they stay healthy. We offer the best benefits in regards to health insurance than any other, except for Globe, I think. But with the only work four days out of the week, that, that's a big plus. Let me rephrase everyone. And the thing is, if someone says that we haven't done enough for our employees, I can tell you, you're wrong. Show me where we haven't. Show what, what other years, what other, what other people did. Of course, we can do better, but at the, at the current situation, it's gonna be difficult. And this is time, this is time for council to make the tough decisions, this is one of them. But you cannot say we have not done a lot for our employees. Simple gesture of working four days is a big thing. So that's all I can say. So as of right now, we're gonna go ahead and go with first. And, and, and we can always go back and actually increase the budget if we have to, depending on the situation. It has to be a very good situation. We need to protect our employees' jobs. We need to make sure we don't do layoffs. But at the end of the day, if we have to, we have no choice. We have to make sure that, that, that our city survives. We survived in 2009, we're gonna survive this also. But we also need to be very cautious in what we do.
Mayor, can, may I add something?
Please.
It's kind of the same subject. Or maybe, I don't know if you're aware, but in case you are, you can enlighten me if not Monica or, or Thadeo. Where do we stand with hazard duty pay for public safety? Are we looking into it? Is it a possibility? Is it not?
I note that they are always looking into it because our first responders, we, we need to look at that because our federal government, what I hear is not happening. There's, there's, there's groups, there are actually congressmen, some of the congressmen up in DC actually don't wanna give anymore assistance, especially to the first responders. It's kinda sad, but some of them, if you're unemployed, you probably make more, more money than our first responders. At the same time, they're being exposed constantly, so.
Especially with the recent news that we received with one of our members from the, from our police force, it made, made me think a lot more on, on how we need to compensate them, reward them or whatever word we wanna use for them that they're out there as first responders.
Do you mean as a, as a permanent, Councilman Luna, do you mean? Do you mean as a permanent customer, Luna, do you mean that as a permanent hazard of space? Or because of COVID?
I would go with because of COVID, as long as we're going through this crisis.
So with that, we have bounced the idea, but again, you know, and you just, you guys just decided on the salary adjustments. But however, we had thought about, you know, the employees are actually here every day, which most of them is public safety. And depending on the number of hours that an employee works, and say, from zero to 50 hours, you get 100 bucks. Or from, you know, from zero to 100, you get 200. And I'm just, we never analyze this, but you know, I'm just giving you figures. We thought about it, but if, I mean, being realistic about it and with what you all just said, I don't think it's realistic for us to compensate them if we don't have the money. But I do agree, we should, we should pay those employees that have been here every day. I mean, most of them, public safety, but it hasn't, they're not the only ones that have been here every day since this started.
Let me tell you something that I, actually, I was with the conference call with Senator Sinema, and she would, actually, something like that was mentioned about that. And the thing is, the small communities, big communities that with populations greater than 500,000, they got direct compensation from the federal government. While small communities like the city of San Luis, city of Somerton, actually, we have to apply for block grants through the federal, through the governor. As of right now, 1.6 billion dollars was given to the state of Arizona for that. And the thing is, as of right now, there are no guidelines how we can get that assistance. And that's for pay, for example, the expenses we have endured over the whole COVID situation, the COVID-19 situation. So if we, if, I mean, we can depend on those grants, we can depend on those monies. And the thing is, because it's gonna be a one-time deal. This is a situation that's going on, so communities are afraid. And the thing is, and I agree Africa. And the thing is, I agree, we need to compensate, we need to do something. But then again, it's more money, unfortunately. So we need to look at that. And Monica, we need to make sure that if we do actually pay incentive, can we get reimbursed through the grant? I believe they're trying to actually, for communities to be able to be reimbursed for such an expense.
Do you refer to the FEMA reimbursement, Mayor?
Yes, I refer to that.
Yes, we're working right now very actively in that. My department is pretty much leading the reimbursement process with FEMA. And we already made a submission, so we have been working closely with them. And yeah, it is the objective of the finance department to get reimbursed as much as we can for the qualified expenditures.
Yeah. I know there's FEMA and there's also the money, the governor actually, I've got 1.6 billion dollars. And there's still no guideline. So the governor can decide to either, one, keep it at Maricopa or actually give it to the small communities. So I hope, I hope he gives it to the small communities, especially for the city of San Luis. Thank you. We've spent this, what, an hour now on this subject? It's a very tough, and the thing is, for people to say we haven't spent a lot of time, we have. So as of right now, it stands, can we cut more? Can council look at the different line items and can we cut more? To justify or do something?
Well, where are we at with Monica's number?
Monica?
Right now, what we have is 400,000 dollars to do street projects. But if we want to keep all of them, we need to cut 270,000 dollars more from what we have.
So do we go down the list or?
Yes, let's go down the list and see what makes a difference.
Sonia, please. Anything on, hold on. Anything on recreation that is before you?
Okay, the lights are gone. They want to buy two John Deere tractors?
More.
Oh, more, more, okay.
Another facility. I don't know if that's impact fees or what is that, what is that, what I go actually moving? Line 127, I mean 126?
126. That's from where? From facilities? Does facilities have a vehicle? Don't they have to share the Crown Victoria?
Didn't we buy one last year for the same reason, or I think in this year's report?
We got them a couple last year. One? I'm sorry, I'm being corrected. We got them one. And there's nine custodians and two with new vehicles, I'm gonna say? And just the one new vehicle that they got last year.
We can hold off on a new vehicle this year. We can move that for next year, unfortunately.
Mayor, we may have a savings on the park, the 20-acre park. Biennestar has asked us to reduce it to 16.4 acres and we'll be meeting on Monday about that.
Okay, and is that because the school?
No, they want to put in more houses and so they've asked us to reduce.
The deal was for how many acres?
20 acres or slightly less if you take away the retention basin, but basically 20 acres and they've asked it to go down to 16.4 acre.
What are they at? What's the price per acre? 30, 35?
Monica, is that amount, everything, just the per acre cost that you have there?
34,000.
34,000?
I think so.
You want to say, that sounds about right, so times 34. So that would be 122,000 other savings if that changes then.
But that's impact fee money. It's not general fund.
So what line, okay, so yeah, so we can...
So, okay, so that's a saving of how much?
31,000. The vehicle for facilities?
31,140.
Okay, but with, okay, well, first and foremost, we need to see what Biennestar wants to do regarding that 16 acres. The deal was for 20.
Yeah, we'll be meeting with them on Monday, so we'll see.
Yeah, so...
Okay, but the savings for the land, because of the situation and how it is right now, and since I was giving the information that the purchase was not gonna happen until November, I put it to purchase the land with the impact fees money, so we wouldn't use general fund.
It's on impact fees. So it doesn't really matter if we buy an acre or two.
Yes, definitely. Yes, it wouldn't matter.
So, so noted, thank you.
Can we go back to that?
What about, hey, we skipped the, how about the truck for parks? Do we need a truck for parks?
Just skip all the way through facilities. We were going down the list.
Hey, Matias, you brought us down, Matias, didn't you?
Oh, yeah, well, that was a big number there, Thadeau. Yeah. I thought we went to parks because we did the soccer field lights and we didn't really go through. They have another vehicle in there, 2024 F-150.
Yeah, wastewater has two pickups.
Those are HERF, I think, or impact fees, right?
This is wastewater fund.
That's enterprise fund.
Yeah, enterprise fund.
They can afford that one. We need to, we need to go, we need to reduce from the... Half of the second page up, the general fund.
Yeah, the first two pages.
Pages one and two, so... Go down to...
Mayor, originally, before we started cutting stuff, I mean, must we trim this down more? We were, what the consensus is that if we needed to subsidize, were we wanting, if we had to subsidize and we've never done it because of the situation that we're in or not?
No, the thing is, we were gonna have to subsidize. And the thing is, it's something that, because HERF fund is basically, we're gonna be losing more funds. If we could start subsidizing right now for HERF, it's do it now instead of later because if we commit, for example, right now, we have the resources to actually subsidize it. What happens if we decide to spend 500,000 extra and we're not gonna be able to subsidize the HERF fund? So I think we should start subsidizing HERF, unfortunately, until we get a positive from the governor and actually the state, which I see that happening, very probably not happen soon.
Okay, so that would help the situation.
Yeah.
Did you guys, what about that? So what do we decide on that port for parks?
We already took 84,000, no, the lights. They want two John Deeres, they want two John Deeres. Can they get one instead of two and keep the truck? I don't know, they need it.
We have a lot of parks, we probably need the mowers. I don't know about the truck. Truck, I think they have a pretty good fleet right now of trucks.
Okay, cut the truck, cut the truck.
Good deal.
Jenny, still there?
Yes, she's here.
Jenny, can I ask you a question?
Yes, council member.
Don't shoot me for asking this and bringing it up. Being that the COVID-19 and our downtown and everything, that master plan for downtown redevelopment for 50?
Well, I, you know, I came before you two years, kind of advising you that our downtown was dying. And this is my third year and it's really happening. So we already are three years late when we should have been planning, but that's just me. I am gonna fight it because I believe that based on the modernization from the port and the lane, the number of hours people are making to cross the border, we need to make it more enticing. I can, I'll tell you that I talked to some of the owners in that area. They're not from this, they're not from San Luis, and that they have told me that they're gonna wait on making any improvements until they know exactly what we're gonna do with that downtown. So based on that, I would highly recommend that we get started or else it's gonna continue to...
My question was more is, should we be waiting until we have the actual final design or, you know, before the port? Because the master plan redevelopment is gonna be based on port of entry in Mahina, no?
Well, I think what my intent is, is to try to first establish the district. So yeah, that's, we're starting. The cost that is in there is not gonna do the full redevelopment, is just starting it. So I'm thinking that if we start it now, we complete it next year and then by the time the port of entry is designed and constructed, we're gonna be aligning with what they're doing.
Okay, all right, that makes sense. Thanks for the reminder. We haven't talked in a while, that's why.
Yeah, thank you.
No, I think, I think we should now is the time. I seen one too many empty buildings on Main Street. I would hate, I think the time is now to plan. And so, no, thank you, Matias, but yeah. I'll get my husband. So...
And the rest we transfer over? Figure it out, see what else we gotta cut out. Any ideas, Monica? Tempo ideas, I mean, a couple of good ones.
Right now Jenny was mentioning something to me, but I told her, like, why don't you give the suggestion?
In my item, I have 50,000 dollars to contract a consultant to do the build grant. We're gonna have, we're gonna have a meeting with the state land department, depending on the outcome. I don't know if the council still wants to look into applying next year, even though we might not be ready, especially with this situation. So that could potentially be an option, but that's a council decision. If you want to try it and we submit as it is now, or wait another year.
And in order for them to do the consultation on the grant, don't we have to have, like you said, we have to have the right-of-way and all that straight?
Correct. And I think our plan was to be advanced enough in the right-of-way acquisition so that it was a more competitive grant. But based on the information that we're getting from the state, if we're not gonna be able to move on the grant, we might have to wait another year, depending on, you know, how we move forward with the state land. But that's an option. I think my, my, my goal, the reason I put it there, even with the COVID, even with the situation with the state land, what I thought that if we move forward in submitting the application, that the actual application would have to pay for the right-of-way acquisition. That's, that's the only way that I can see us submitting it. We don't know if we're gonna be successful, obviously, for the reason that they rather have, that you have the right-of-way acquisition already. But if, if the land appraisal stays as it is, it's gonna be very difficult for us to move forward and try to find 5 million dollars for the right-of-way acquisition. So that's a council decision. I put it in there because I was still moving forward with that, but this decision from the state land department has put doubts in my mind. I have not talked about it with Delogio, so I'm looking at him.
Delogio can just stand next to everyone who's coming up, okay?
Oh, they're powering together before they get to the podium, see?
Oh, that's a new one for us, David.
And you know, it says they're both gonna be up there, Jenny and Delogio, while you're, after you're done explaining that part, we might have to go back and review that master, I hate to say it, but the bicycle master plan. Ian, where we're at, so I might go ahead.
We're in trouble now, Mira.
The bicycle is not my project, so you can delete it if you like. No, no, don't tell that to Jose.
Start, Matias.
Now we have everybody up there. That's Matias, the ax, the person, Matias.
Actually, Louis has a good idea on that one, on the bicycle master plan.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. Louis Galvez, Parks and Rec Director. Looking at this, I think one of the things that I would propose, and I can follow up with Jose Guzman, is we see the master plan for the bicycle and we also have the parks master plan. It might be more cost-effective if maybe on the parks master plan, adding the component of the bicycle master plan into that. And because they're gonna do, they're gonna be developing pathways, which the pathways are really gonna, I believe, coincide with what our bicycle would be also. So we can look at that option and maybe, maybe save some money there, you know, anywhere. It's not significant, but maybe 10 or 15,000. And combine those two plans. So that's just a thought also.
I think we're gonna have more of an impact if we actually have the bike paths.
What we've seen in other... What we've seen in, uh, in, uh, other, um, cities is that when they do a master plan, um, it's usually the, the trails, the bicycle, and the parks all together, because they really, it's the connectivity of all those, um, that, that help provide a true plan, uh, for, um, for the city.
And for the record, mayor, I was just joking, I truly support, uh, the master plan, and I was just giving him a hard time.
Oh, actually Jenny, I actually wrote a permanent delete, so thank you Jenny.
But Louis, do you have an idea if we combine them, how much more the park wanna go? I mean, you had 50 and, uh, 25 to 75, how much do you think we could save?
Hmm.
Have you combined them together?
I think, I think, uh, I mean, I'd have to ask, uh, to get some quotes, but I think another component would maybe be another 10,000, so maybe it'd be 60, and saving about 15 there. It's not significant, but I mean, it's something, and it, and maybe, and, uh, really, it'd be more ideal working together with community development, uh, in putting this, this plan together, because, you know, parks, pathways, bicycle, uh, you know, connections, that's gonna be what we really should, uh, it should all be encompassing one, one plan.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you Louis.
Right now I was talking to Elojio and Jenny, and, um, about the consultant for the, uh, grant for the Cesar Chavez, we were thinking that, given all the challenges that we have, uh, we know that it's a very important project, but, um, it seems, uh, very slim that we, uh, will be able to be at some point there. But still, we wanna have a backup plan, what if, yes, what if we can do something, but given the constraints that we have, we were thinking that maybe it would be better just to remove that item. And if it comes to the point that we are in the position that we can proceed with that, uh, that item, we can easily get it from the contingency, uh, fund from council. Uh, that we always put there some cushion for unexpected things that might happen. This will be a very good item that we can easily get funds from there, if we ever come, if, if it comes that we are ready to move forward with a project, and that the discussions in regards of the land, uh, get better than we expect. But we can, we can remove it from there, but leave it as a, if it happens, we can go and get from the contingency, uh, from council.
Monica, I agree on that one, uh, the thing is, uh, it's, uh, it's, uh, actually being more complicated, so with all the COVID, everything stopped. And unfortunately, um, it's gonna be some time we can actually, but it's something that needs to happen. That's, that's one thing, it's something that, it is important for our community also. Uh, but, uh, like you said, but if we can get it from the contingency fund, if, if the option, uh, occurs, we can always go back and actually from the, 50,000 is better than 180,000 forever and ever.
Yes, because we don't wanna like, uh, uh, close the doors and say, okay, we cannot, we don't have a solution, and we wanna make sure that we take it out, that we have a solution in case that we can, that we need to go there. And, and for that one, I think that we can easily can get it from the, uh, funds that we set aside as a cushion for council.
Okay, I agree, let's take it out.
I'm just doing the, the calculations of where we are right now.
Louis, how about your cultural center projector and screen? Do you have half of it, do you need the screen?
What line item?
64.
I'm sorry, what was that, councilman?
If you need the projector and screen for the cultural center.
Again, uh, this, it's about 10 years old, uh, we received, we received the quote from IT. The events that we hold there, it's always a, it's something key that's always utilized, uh, that's why we're asking for it. Um, this year, I think it's gonna be used more, uh, just because of, of, uh, we, we were looking at, uh, activities, uh, kind of, uh, more in, uh, presentations, uh, but again.
Okay, that makes sense.
Yeah, no, we're gonna make a big impact on that one, 10 years old, I mean.
Yeah, okay.
I don't think, I don't think IT has a 10-year-old vehicle yet, so.
No, no, no. Yeah, that's part of that Facebook post that I saw that you guys are planning to do the online activities and all that good stuff, so, yeah, we need that to supplement others.
Right now you asked me if I have any suggestions or ideas, uh, right now, it's not much, but it makes a difference, but I think that every little thing add up. Uh, right now in the police, we do have, uh, two items. We have the breath test machine, and we have the life scan ward station. Those items, I think that we can cover them with a special revenue fund, instead of paying them with a general fund.
Oh, okay.
Uh, could you show us on the light item, could you show us on, on the cap, uh, where is it, what light item is it?
83, 84.
And I, and I look back, if, if the chief was here, I, I, I talked about this to Michelle, and, uh, because I was trying to look of, uh, things that can qualify for that, and, uh, these two items, uh, can qualify for that, uh, to be covered with, uh, uh, special revenue.
Okay. Whoever's controlling the screen, could you put it on those items, please?
Do you want me to show it on the screen? Uh, it's gonna be on the police, uh, budget, police department. Oh, there is the, the chief.
We were just talking about your chief.
That was my, Michael Jackson, mayor, vice mayor.
There you go, okay.
I figured we needed some entertainment. What's your question?
So, we're, we're talking about the breath laser, breath test machine, to actually be able to actually from, what was it, the special revenues, Monica?
Yes, uh, chief, I was mentioning, because they asked me, like, do you have any suggestions, we're trying, like, working very hard to find places, and I mentioned that those two items, the, uh, breath test machine, and the life scan ward station, that those two items, um, are potential items that we can purchase with a special revenue, it's not a lot, uh, I, I checked, and you have, uh, funds there to do that, and.
And one of the things that we can do is, in, in talking with staff as well, right now that life scan machine doesn't work, and we are actually doing all of the fingerprinting, um, manually. And they think that we could actually take that out and not worry about that, even though we have the money in special revenues, so we can save a little bit there. Um, and we could move the breath machine, that's, uh, our machine will be obsolete. They're recommending that all police departments replace their 8,000s with the 9,000s, so we could do that.
That's very good, thank you chief, um, and the vehicles, uh, I see that the, the department request was 600,000, we're only getting 180,000. How many vehicles are we getting, chief?
Those are the three, those are three Ford F-150s that we are going to replace, uh, the fleets with. Uh, number one, the Ford F-150s, we get completely outfitted for 60. The Ford Tauruses that we do have on the fleet, and also the Explorers we have in the fleet, would normally cost us about 80-plus thousand dollars for those outfitted. So we can pick up more of the Ford F-150s, which is a much more conducive vehicle that we've discussed before, uh, simply because of the safety factors involved with it, um, as far as visibility is, is concerned as well. So, we have over 15 vehicles that are either 10 years old or over 100,000 miles. Uh, we at least this year were able to save a little bit of money, simply because we've tried to minimize travel, uh, to do that as well, so it's an area that, over the next few years, we're going to have to really address with that. We asked for 10, simply because so many were over, uh, it looks like we could get three. Um, if I had to give anything more back, uh, to help, uh, first of all, I wanna thank council uh, for your generous offer of allowing us to get two more officers. Uh, but in looking at trying to cut 75,000 from the budget, we looked at each line item, and there was no possible way for us to do that, so we, we have given one of those positions back as well. If you look at the rest of the list, you'll notice the e-ticket machine that's up there, it's the Brazos Rapid. Um, I would rather give that up. If our machines that are a little bit getting more obsolete, that keep going down, that they're not in service anymore, uh, we can always go back to manually writing the citations, um, and doing it that way. Doesn't take that much longer, uh, this is the program that would work with all of our cell phones. It'd make it very quick, very easy, along with the printers. That is something that we could possibly turn around and look at for a next year, uh, as we work through all of the COVID-19 situations that we all face now. So that is something that I would rather take off the table, um, rather than the vehicles, simply because I need the vehicles more than I need, uh, the, the applications, as far as that's concerned. So, that's, that's my two cents, and if you, if all have questions, I can answer that as well.
No, chief, uh, no, we're not even talking about, talking, touching vehicles, chief, uh, and the thing is, uh, and, and for us to go back to, uh, for those people who are, I, I'm sorry, uh, and regarding going back to writing our tickets, we're already ahead of the curve, chief, so I wouldn't wanna go back. I, I think, uh, I think, uh, your, your budget should stay, uh, uh, and the thing is, uh, we're only getting the, the, not all, I mean, you, you requested 10 vehicles and, and you've already gave up position, so I, I think, uh, PPD and FIRE, uh, is something that we've, uh, no, we can't go backwards, in my opinion, so I think the Razor Rapid Extension Framework PDA should, we should keep.
Mayor, I'm sorry, can I say something, mayor, uh?
Yes, please, yes, please.
Uh, can, can we do something a little bit more about the PD? I mean, uh, I know he's asking only for three vehicles, I, I, I mean, I wish we could give him at least five. I mean, you know, he needed 10, but I mean, if he can give him five, I mean, can we do something around, can we work around with something? Uh, can you get money from someplace else and give him at least two more vehicles? So make it, make it five?
We have replaced, uh, basically all the vehicles, what's happening is, our, our vehicles, for example, our Explorers, they probably have high mileage. And the thing is, uh, to, uh, we're talking, uh, that's only how many vehicles, chief, three?
Yeah, for now, I mean, o- obviously, because we've got so many that are over 10 years old and have over 100,000 miles, um, we asked for 10, that still wouldn't bring us, we would still have vehicles that would be over that. But over the next few years, as far as, three to five years from now, those vehicles, those vehicles are gonna be 15 to 20 years old, and have hundreds of thousands of miles on it, if we don't start looking at how we're going to replace those. Uh, we could go backwards again and, and, uh, pick up horses and six shooters, uh, the feed's a little bit cheaper than gas, but we have to start looking at that from a five-to-10-year master plan, to see how we're going to replace this fleet down the road, because, uh, it's gonna cost us more to maintain it than it is gonna cost us to, to purchase new ones, at some particular point.
I, I think if we, uh, if actually, if, depending on how the, the, uh, we'll know in six months how we're gonna be. Uh, if, 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 if we, uh, if we do well, if we do what we have to do, I think we can actually, uh, purchase a lot more vehicles for you the next fiscal year, that's something we can commit, Fonse. I know if we, if we add another vehicle right now, we would have to cut from another department. Uh, we're already, we're already close to, to, to where we need to be. Um, I suggest we don't cut anymore, or, uh, to the police, and I wish I had more, I wish we can add, actually add 14 more positions. Uh, uh, but, um, at this point in time, um, uh, Fonse, Fonse, it would be hard.
Okay?
Fonse, I mean, noted, um, any, any other suggestions? I suggest keep PD as is at, at the point in time, uh, and, and actually purchase what we can with the special revenues. Uh, but also, we would, we wanna get rid of all the special revenue, uh, so, uh, let us know, chief, okay?
Correct.
Are we having technical difficulties with the, with the mic, IT?
With which mic?
Which one?
Uh, uh, your, your, your chief.
Yeah, no, we're good.
No, we're good.
Okay, I, I saw you stay quiet, I was like, oh, oh, I see something.
No, you're leaving everything from his budget, he's not gonna say anything.
No, I was gonna say, thank you very much for, uh, for, uh, uh, supporting the police department, but no, I think you guys already know, I, I greatly appreciate everything that you do, and, and during these times, I know, I know budgets are very difficult to do. Uh, we've all been there, we've all done that, and you have the most difficult part. But know that PD will do whatever you need for us to do, and no matter what we have to do, we still go out and do our job every single day. Uh, that's what, that's what we do, we're thankful to have our jobs, we're thankful to be paid what we're paid, uh, and we will continue to serve you and the community to the best of our ability, no matter what the consequence to the budgets are. But we thank you, uh, very much for your support over the years, and continued support with, with this particular budget, thank you.
Thank you, chief. Uh, yes, I was, uh, we, we have a commitment for next year, uh, if we, if, if all possible, uh, we should actually, half of our fleet should be replaced.
Okay.
Fonse, okay?
Thank you, mayor.
Everything stays the same?
Yeah.
For police?
Move, move the one to the.
The braces for that, for another.
No, the Brazos was gonna stay, and then the only thing that's gonna go to the, the only thing that's gonna go is the, um, take the, take the life scan out, we don't need it.
Neither with the special revenue completely.
Nope, doesn't need to go there.
Okay.
And then put the, uh, breath machine for, uh, special revenue.
Special revenue, okay. Okay, uh, right now when the chief was talking, uh, it's amazing, I, I gotta say, it's amazing the team that we have. That's why you see me like, walking back and forth, everybody is Monica, Monica, hey, this and that. So right now, um, talking with, uh, Louis, Jenny, Elojio, Miguel, uh, we all came up, uh, well, they came up with a suggestion, and I think it's a good suggestion that we can do, uh, for the plan, for the bicycle plan. Uh, if we combine that as part of the park project, uh, we might be able to pay it with, uh, impact fees. Uh, well, we can pay it if it's part of the same park project. If we consolidated that in one plan, uh, it can be covered with, uh, impact fees fund, and that will give us 50,000 dollars.
Okay, good, very good.
Uh, the teamwork's to me, and I think we have it.
I think we're, we're done?
The rest, everything, mayor, provide a check.
Oh, yes.
Answer some of that first bang, Yuma.
75,000, okay, I'm just seeing one, so 75,000, so we are only 50,000 dollars.
Monica, you keep adding stuff. I thought we were done half an hour ago, so.
No, uh, what, uh, the other thing, and, and the 70,000 dollars that I came up with, um, let me just do the, yeah, the calculation again. Okay, because when I did the calculation.
Replace wall time clock machine with HID reader.
Yeah, the, the calculation that I did, uh, that it gives me the 70,000 dollars was including the Louis idea of the park, and it was considering, uh, because that's another idea, and, 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 and this one, well, I talked to Elojio, but, uh, I know that he mentioned to me, I said, uh, what if we need to go down and, 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 and cutting her? And he mentioned that one track for sure, for sure is very, uh, essential. So I was thinking in maybe, uh, leaving just one track, reducing, uh, and also removing the dump trailer, and if we do that, we just have 70,000 remaining, which I think that at this point, we can just leave it as it is. I think that we have done so much.
Well, Monica, you challenged us, and you load, and you told us that we had to do, do it right, so.
I would love it, you can find me the 70,000, but at this point, I think, I think, I very appreciate it, uh, everybody has worked very hard, uh, for me. Seeing my colleagues right now standing up. Seeing my colleagues right now standing up and coming to me and coming together, I think that's priceless.
Okay. Monica, I think you can find 70,000, okay?
Well, if you want to find me 70,000, I'm open for it. Like, I would love to have them.
We'll find them.
Okay, find them. Twenty-seven thousand, guys, so. We did the hard part.
Okay.
Got it?
Okay, no, thank you very much, everyone. I appreciate very much. Oh, yeah, we still have the positions. Maybe there we can find them. Do you want to see them? Do you, yeah, we didn't talk about the positions, but there are.
How you tell them to replace it with positions? No, no.
No, what I, no, no, no.
And maybe there, yes, but looking very quickly, maybe there you can find the 70,000 that we need. That would be awesome.
So, to go, to go down, I'm going to have Sonia enter the list. And we got this from the budget retreat. We left the office assistant, the accounting specialist for when we take over the ambulance services, the principal planner for development services, an administrative assistant for the four divisions of Parks and Rec. And I'm sorry, she moved it. Then two part-time maintenance technicians for parks. That administrative assistant is the same one as the one for the Cultural Center, Recreation and Youth Center and Municipal Pool. A part-time office assistant for the senior center. A court security officer that is mandated by the court to have it. One police officer. One lot detailer mechanic for the, for fleet services. A network administrator.
So, actually, it's a mechanic.
What was that?
So, actually, for fleet, this is actually a mechanic.
Ralph? Are you still there, Ralph? Ralph?
Is that a fancy name now? Hello?
Yes. I'm the lot porter detailer mechanic. Is it going to be a mechanic or those three?
It's going to be both.
Okay, so.
Car runner, car delivery and mechanic.
Okay, so yes, Mayor. And then we have the network administrator. All those are the positions for the general fund. Now, for the enterprise funds. For herf, we have a crew leader supervisor. For water, we have a water chief operator. For wastewater, we have a wastewater operator. And then the other half that's going to pay for the accounting specialist for when we take over the ambulance services. Do you happen to have any concerns on any of these positions that we are recommending to be left in the budget?
What I look is, they're essential. Which position is not essential, in your opinion? I mean, the municipal pool. Tell me about that position.
What was that?
It's a division of three departments?
Yeah, that, that is the, so we have, currently, we have those, those Parks and Rec has an administrative coordinator and has five divisions. And it's the, six divisions. And it's the only department that has just one administrative coordinator without an administrative assistant. So, that's why it's divided, it's divided between the accounts that is going to be charged to. But it'll be for the Cultural Center, Recreation, Youth Center, Pool and Recreation. So, it's divided. It's for the whole department, not just, you know, there.
Tadeo, what happened to the position that Sonia has been requesting?
That one, before I get, well, now I'm getting the eagle eye. We thought, we thought.
Who's giving you the eagle eye? I want to see it, I want to see it.
La Sonia.
Oh, it's Sonia.
It is, it is a, it is a, it is not, you know, the positions that were removed, it's not that they, we don't need, I mean, we need them all. But that one.
It can wait.
In a way. And, but that one, we decided that with, every department has a records. What is it, Sonia, records manager? A records coordinator. And we're hoping that they can continue this all year to help Sonia and Melissa and the Office of the City Clerk out with records management and hopefully get by one more year without that position. But essentially, as, excuse me, as we grow, we will need that position housed.
Tadeo, Tadeo, quick question. How long has been Sonia been waiting for that position?
Five, six years.
And that position is going to cost us how much?
Was it 60,000?
So, Sonia, you can jump in.
Plus benefits?
Mayor, this is Sonia. I don't have the exact information here in front of me, but approximately it was going to be like 48,000 with benefits.
With benefits, Monica?
That's what I'm thinking, maybe 52,000. But it will be about that. Do you remember the pay rate? You don't remember the pay rate? But I think it's, it's like administrative coordinator about that pay rate, doesn't it?
It was close to 50,000.
Yeah, it was, it was, it was not.
I think it will be like 52,000?
Yes. It was like 18 an hour plus printers.
Okay, if it's 18 an hour, it will be 57,000.
Yeah, 60,000.
57,000 if it's 18 an hour. That's what I was asking Sonia if she remembered the pay rate.
The reason I ask is like, she's been waiting six years for this position.
And we took, and we took away her car, Mayor.
And we took away her car. And the thing is, if there's a person, I mean, Sonia and, 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 I guess there's two, there's two employees in that, in that, in that area. Sonia, am I correct?
Yes, you're correct, Mayor.
Okay. Yeah. I think, I think five, six years is enough weight. De veras, I think, what position here can someone be without?
About senior center, office assistant, I know it's part-time, but that would help offset the cost.
I know parks, they're hurting for, for people.
For grounds, yeah. City administration office assistant, what is that? For the administrator, is that for?
That's the, that's the front desk position.
The Culture Center. How many, how many assistants do we have in the Culture Center?
Yeah, but that's the same position of four of those. That's one person for all four departments. But do they have someone already there or not?
Because I really think five, six years is enough time. And some of these positions are being created right now.
Mayor, why don't we do the, the, make him a part-timer?
Right now, Elogio just came to me. Right now, he came and he, I'm sorry.
Monica, what?
Elogio, he just came to me and he told me that they can do and wait another year without the lot porter mechanic. So, that if, that will relieve some funds to make room for.
Ay. Pero me, pero me, pero me. The thing is, if we're going to keep our vehicles longer, we're going to have problems with, we need mechanic.
I agree with the mayor.
Okay, so just, just to clarify. So, we do have a part-time mechanic and it's not in that list. So, we are requesting the promotion of that part-time to be full-time. So, in essence, this, this person would be assisting moving vehicles, not necessarily a full-time mechanic, but more of a assistant to the mechanics. So, since we don't have the new shop, that's why, that's why I suggested that, that change. But we want to definitely keep the full-time mechanic. And I confirm, Monica and Tadeo confirmed that those are still, that's still in the list, just a different list, not this one.
Yeah.
Have new positions.
When going to be converted to full-time.
So, we get one list and there's a, there's another list?
Well, the other one is an existing, it's, the other one's an existing part-time mechanic. It will be promoted to a full-time mechanic. So, we will have five full-time mechanics plus the office, part runner and office assistant person.
Okay, because I was under the impression this guy was going to be, this person was going to be a mechanic. So, if we can actually make the part-timer into a full-time mechanic, I think it's good.
That's what we have in the budget already.
Yes, and they confirmed that for me. That's why I volunteered, but otherwise I wouldn't have. I know these guys are busy. But I did check with the shop manager earlier today and that's really the priority for us, making sure that part-time becomes full-time.
Okay, yeah, I heard about that. I know they wanted to make that a full-time.
I mean, if we, if we can do it without removing this position, it will be ideal also, you know, but that's something that, keeping the.
Es que Sonia has been waiting for five, six years and I, and I think we need, she needs a lot of help. And the thing is, we, in this age of technology, we need to make sure our history is written correctly. We want to make sure that we leave a legacy to our children. So, I agree on both, pero aquí, I'm going to, Sonia, I think we should, we should, we should focus this time on Sonia.
Mayor, can I ask a question?
Please ask.
The city administration office assistant, that's for Sonia?
No, it's not even there. They took the position away.
Oh, that one, this one, did they take it away, this one?
They took Sonia's away completely.
They're adding the, they're adding Sonia's position. It's not on the list.
Okay. It, what was, this is city administration office, they can expect it, Tadeo?
No, it does the front desk position.
On desk.
Okay.
Pero si me quiere dar una, more than welcome. I need the help.
Okay, que dice, city administration, que yo quen más?
That, la posición, that position. And the, actually, the front desk positions, work, sorry, si todos esos están en mi budget, pero none of them with me. Pero si me quiere dar una, bienvenido, me tienen siempre uno solito.
Okay, so going back to the mechanic. So, there's not a mechanic, it's a parts thing. So, we can, we can get rid of that and we offset the position. Actually, it's not going to cover Sonia's position completely, but we're going to offset. Okay, now, Monica, this brings us back to another number. What is that number we need to get rid of?
Well, pretty much giving that up and putting Sonia's position and what we had is about 75,000.
We'll find them.
Do I hear a commitment from Tadeo and staff?
You're hearing it from me, not probably from Monica. It's not going to agree, but yeah, we'll find them.
It's better, 75 is better than 650,000.
Yes, yes, definitely. That's what, right now, I'm happy as it is. And 75,000, like, like Tadeo mentioned, if he makes the commitment to find me that amount, I'm more than happy to.
Okay. So, I think, I think you can guys find, find 75,000. Pero I want to make sure that Sonia's position is there. Be Sonia, I just want to make sure, porque si no, I'm going to have to write a lot of stuff for you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Oh, no, es que, oh, no, no. You, during the budget, you really impressed me, Sonia. And I want to make sure you understand that. It's for a purpose, Sonia, okay? It's for a purpose.
Thank you.
Mayor, should we give her an option for the car or the employee?
I know. You want to give her that option? You can give her that option. You're not, I'm giving her the employee.
I'm wondering what she says, that's why.
I think IT probably might have a van, a white van somewhere.
We have some police cars being released.
Okay, so we're done. 75 staff, les encargamos, por favor, okay?
Okay, thank you so much, I appreciate it. Like I said, it was amazing to see how everybody came together. I think this is the first time that I've been in a meeting that the staff comes to me with ideas and suggestions. And that's awesome. I appreciate it very much from everyone, also Council. I appreciate also your support. I know that it was not an easy task. It was very difficult. But you came forward, you did a job. It's done. 70,000 is nothing compared to what we needed to reduce. So, kudos to all of you.
Thank you. And yeah, thank you, staff. Thank you, Council, for making the tough decisions. It's not very easy, especially the situation we're in right now. So, let's be grateful. And I will now entertain a motion to adjourn.
So, move, Mayor.
Second.
There's a motion, there's a second, I'll listen, favor?
Aye.
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 Right afterwards, aye.
Que paso, what happened?
Don't forget not to log off, we still have another meeting right next.
Oh, that's why, that's why I want to end it now because we still have another meeting. We have to do work.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, thank you. So, there's, there was a motion, there's a second, there was a vote, there was no nays confirmed. Have a good night. Thank you so much, gracias.